I have one.
I'm gonna pace myself.
You won't need those for two or three items.
I don't wanna dig through them with the microphone.
All right, I'd like to welcome everyone out to the Thursday, August 1st, 2019 Planning Commission meeting, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance by Darcy Wayman.
Please stand for the pledge.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a full quorum today, as you can see, and then moving on to item 1.3, are there any conflicts of interest with the Planning Commission in any of the agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on to the administrative items, and we do have a couple, let me see, a couple, we do have some public hearings today as well, and I'm gonna read now the public hearing policy and procedure before we start. The purpose of public hearings is to allow citizens to address items on the agenda. Citizens requesting to address the commission will be asked to complete a written comment form and present it to Wendy Thorpe, Deputy City Recorder. In general, the chair will allow an individual two minutes to address the commission. A spokesperson recognized as representing a group in attendance may be allowed up to five minutes. This policy applies to all public hearings. And then we'll start off with item 2.1, which is a request for a subdivision plot amendment for Lot 307 of Fort Harriman Cove to adjust the 30% slope area, and we'll turn to city staff.
All right, so, as you said, this is a plat amendment for a lot up in Fort Harriman Cove. These are larger lots up, right, kind of on the foothills. When this lot was originally platted, you can see the, let me get my, I'll put my mouse on the right screen, right? This one. There was this 30% slope area shown on there. When they actually went to build on it, they surveyed it and they looked at it, and where we had shown it on the plat wasn't exactly accurate, so again, you can see it zoomed in here. Because it is a drainage easement, and it wasn't necess, so this is the slope and this is the drainage easement, and it, and again, the onsite conditions were different than that. So, again, the original plat, what they're asking to do is amend the plat to remove this area from the drainage easement to allow it to be buildable for them. So it'll just kinda skinny up that drainage easement, and they'll be able to have a larger building pad in the front. Engineering has reviewed this, they're fine with the change. We just have to do a plat amendment because it was actually on the plat as unbuildable, so we need to amend it so they can move forward and build, and they're very excited to build in Harriman. They're happy to be residents here. And we're happy to have them, so, so again, this is on for, it's actually not a public hearing, so I'll take that back, because a plat amendment is not a public hearing anymore. But the applicant is here if you have any questions of them, so.
All right, if we can have the applicant come up and then just state your name, and if there's any more insight or comments you'd like to share.
Obviously, I'm Craig, and this is Allison.
Hello.
We're the Gunthers, and this is the lot we'll be building on, so basically, it was just to correct that mistake so that you can see, we've got enough area to actually build on that, with it that way, and the setback from the street and all that, it was really hard to get anything built on it. So now, we're able to build that, and that's, thank, thanks to staff, they've been amazing to work with. It's just been great, so, like I say, we're excited to build.
We're thir, we've thoroughly been impressed with dealing with all of the commissioners that we've dealt with, and they've been helpful, and, yeah, we appreciate it.
Well, thank you. And then, I'll just turn to the, I'll let you have a seat if the Planning Commission doesn't have any questions for you.
I know.
I'll let you have a seat.
All right.
And then I'll turn to the Planning Commission for comments and/or a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item 2.1 with staff's two recommendations.
I'll second that.
Motion by Adam and a second by Brody, and we'll call for a vote, starting on this side with Andy.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Andrea.
Yes.
Brody.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
And Lauren.
Yes.
Thank you so much for your time.
They're grateful they were first.
I know. We'll move on to item 2.2, which is a request for a site plan review for 30 single-family lots in, and it's Hidden Oaks Pod 4 Phase 1, and we'll turn to the staff.
Sorry, we're on Ivory, right, Hidden Oaks?
Yep, 2.2.
Sorry, my agenda and PowerPoint are in a different order, so I'm, it's a little fun game for me.
And just, just a correction with what I'm, we're seeing on the screen, that's actually item 2.2 and 2.3.
Right, yeah. So this item, I'll kinda go over a little history of it. This is, you can see on the map, this is part of the larger Danzy project, now known as Hidden Oaks. It's about 500 acres that we approved about a year and a half ago. You can see the whole plan here, as it was approved last year. So they did a, they were one of the first ones who did the new plan development overlay zone, instead of a PUD as a conditional use, and then also, they have a development agreement. So, they are coming in, this is the first phase they're coming in, which is on this Pod 4. The, there's Pod 20 and Pod 1 will be coming in very shortly, so we're, we're gonna start to see these coming in. So, on a project like this, again, what you have here is kind of an overall approval with densities and some criteria that are laid out in the approval and the development agreement, and then they come in with final details on, on each site. Each site has two applications, so it's always a little bit confusing, because they have to do a final site plan, and that's meeting the PUD portion of the requirements, and then a preliminary plat. So they overlap in a lot of ways, but it is technically two different, two different applications.
And the preliminary plat is actually a public hearing.
Correct, yep. And they do have to have a neighborhood meeting, so, and all that with the preliminary plat. So, this is the whole phase, again, you can see here, and what they're showing here is asking for just Phase 1 at this point. And again, just to kinda show you how they have it all laid out right now, they're taking down the whole Danzy property in, in kinda big chunks, so this is the portion that we'll see coming in here in the next year. So this is the phase we're looking at now, is just this first phase along Main Street. Again, this is the layout. There's, there's, there's some drop-off here and some open space, they're maintaining a long, a long Harriman Highway, and we'll go over that a little bit. Again, this just gives you another of the overall layout. The actual plat, so this has all the dimensions and, and lot sizes on there for you. And you've got all this in your packet, again, all the grading, and they submitted the utility sheets and all that. This is a preliminary landscaping plan, again, showing mostly street trees, and then some of the detention on the east side. They're talking about, and I can let the applicant talk a little bit about this, again, there's kind of a, a flat area and then a drop-off off of, off of Harriman Highway, so just maintaining this as, as open space, instead of trying to put it into the back of those lots. There is, they are required to have a, they're required, just part of the development agreement and the PUD, to have a wall, a precast wall along Main Street. I keep saying Main Street, it's Harriman Highway. But their discussion is that they would like to move a wall or a fence down off of, it doesn't make sense to put a fence up here on the top, they'd rather put it down on the back of the lots, and maintain this, so they kinda have a concept here, you know, of maybe doing like, we've talked, like an eight-foot asphalt trail, instead of a typical sidewalk there, maybe some birmingham and stuff through this open space. And there's actually been meetings all day today about it, about what the city might wanna see down there, so this is kind of gonna be a, a work in progress along that piece. You have all of the elevations in your packet, I put just a few of them in here, just to give you an example. Their development agreement has design guidelines which requires them just to meet the city's standard, and that was what we wanted, it's easier for us to enforce that way. So again, the typical 40% brick or stone requirement on the elevations, which as you can see, these all have a lot of, of stone and brick on them. That's what I have. The applicant is here, I'm sure he would love to talk to you, and answer any questions you have.
All right, thank you so much, Bryn. If the applicant's present, if you wanna come up, just state your name.
Brad Mackey with Ivory Homes, glad to be here, finally. It's, it's exciting, it's been years since I've been able to work in Harriman, so I'm excited to be back, so. We closed on the property several months ago, and have been working with staff to figure out this, this format on how to submit, and to do the different things, so we're excited to finally be here. Our plan is to, to bring on 30 lots that you're seeing in your packet, and while we're working on those 30 lots, there's some soil remediation that we need to work on. The sewer district has the trunk line sewer that will be starting, I believe, next week, that goes down through the
Bottom.
Through the bottom, and then we also have a FEMA channel to build, and so you're, you're going to be seeing some, some phasing in chunks a little bit, but over the next year, you're gonna see it all come together and, and be beautiful. Our plan is to bring this first 30 lots on, and, and bring it on so we can try and get it paved this year if possible, so that we can start a model home and, and get some work going on, on some homes in the area, while we work on the, the bigger picture items of soil remediation, drainage, sewer, all that kinda stuff. So, so for tonight, the approval is really just for, for that 30 lots, both site plan approval and preliminary plat approval, but in conjunction with that, I wanted to bring forward the fencing concept along Harriman Highway, just to get your feedback and see if you're agreeable to, to changing what was required in the last portion of the development agreement, which required a six-foot masonry wall, a precast wall right adjacent to the sidewalk on Harriman Highway. And our proposal would be to disconnect the sidewalk from the street section and create a meandering trail with some birmingham trees, a three-rail fence, so that we can tie it all in and make it look park-like. So that's why this is brought forward to you tonight, to, to get some feedback from you, to see if this is something you would be interested in, or if we'd still be required to have the six-foot masonry wall adjacent to the sidewalk. Other than that, I will be glad to answer any questions.
Brad, why don't you talk about?
Oh, sorry.
No, you're okay. The, you'd also talked about building the road and some of those improvements.
Oh, yes.
Kind of upfront, so maybe just explain that.
So if you can go back to the overall. So, in our, in our purchase, we actually sold a portion of the property to Perry Homes, so they are our partners on this project. They have acquired Pod 1 and Pod 20, and Ivory will maintain ownership of Pod 4, 5, 6, and 7. So just to give you an idea of who will be building in which pod, and what we have talked about doing is, I believe it, it's actually getting submitted tomorrow, all of the backbone roads and infrastructure will be submitted with one phase of a backbone infrastructure plan. So we plan on building all of Harriman Highway and what we call right now Danzy Boulevard, all at one time. So you'll be submit, seeing plans on all of the master infrastructure in the, in the next meeting you have, so that we can go ahead and build all the infrastructure up front. Along with that, we will be building entry monuments, landscaping, the theming for the community, and we plan to build that all up front, so.
Can you describe what you mean by the, I, I like the idea of the landscaping and meandering. Are you saying that you still would put it, what fencing material you're proposing along
We would propose either a two or a three-rail fence, to kinda keep, maintain the historic theming of the farm area, and, and some of the meetings earlier today, we talked about some ideas for that, and that would tie into what the city plans for that area, or is hoping to plan for that area. I'm not sure they're ready to speak to that yet, but, but the, the trail and the rail fencing would tie into what the, the city is planning for the bigger picture.
Is there any other fencing along the back of those homes, though?
Yes, the back of the homes would have a continuous fencing, but the proposal is, the homes will sit about 16 feet down below Harriman Highway.
Right.
So they're way down the hill, and so they will have a fence along their backyard, along that area.
Vinyl, or?
Yeah, materials.
What are you proposing, material?
We haven't proposed a material yet. Typically, concrete isn't the greatest for people's backyard, so we're open to discussion on that. We, we like Trex fencing in these kind of applications, looks nice, glass, vinyl, something like that.
You know what, they're planning on Pod 20, I guess.
We would coordinate everything with all the pods, so, so any, any kind of materials we choose will be carried throughout the project.
Will that also apply the landscaping on Pod 20? I know that's
Yes, yes. So we're, we're working together on all of the landscape design guidelines and fencing materials with Perry. So it will all be coordinated.
Now, one other thought, and this really directs you to the Planning Commission, is on 118 on the other side, we have given the option, and I remember this with Bullfrog, to make a paved trail similar to a bike path, with the concept or idea of going all the way around, which would come out on this side. So, we haven't talked about that, but the potential of a bike trail coming all the way up here may make more sense, and, and just a little wider, paved more, trail type.
I think the landscaping should be flexible, I don't
And so, that is one thing that we need to keep into consideration, if that is a concept that we wanna continue based off of what we've already been doing, with the long-term plan of if there is something that eventually goes through Butterfield Canyon, so.
Fair, makes sense to me.
Bryn, you can give me a map of what they're talking about?
They just want an eight-foot asphalt trail instead of a sidewalk.
Oh, oh.
That's what that meant.
Yeah, more of a hiking, biking, that's off the road.
That's what we were hoping for. It's a smoother surface to ride bikes and
And, and this just comes from on the other side of 118, it's, that's sort of where we've been going with that entire side, to, it's a, it's a 10-mile loop that a lot of bikers use, and it's getting less and less safe with the road, with the roads around there.
That sounds great.
Probably a 10-foot wide, not eight-foot, though, preferred, right? A little wider?
No. Are there any other questions for the applicant before I let him sit down? Thank you so much.
Thank you, I'll be glad to answer any questions after.
Thank you. And then we'll turn to the Planning Commission for additional comments.
I'd like to make a comment, in our joint meeting, we talked about, I think there was like, a desire between the city and the developers of giving variety to this Pod 4, and maybe minimizing some, I guess, taking out a couple lots in order to have more variety within this little subdivision. I don't really see that, and curious how many three-car garages fit within this layout.
Do you wanna direct that to the applicant?
Yeah, sure.
As he may have a better idea of how many three-car garage homes actually fit within this layout.
A lot of the elevations show them, but I just
From what I understand, the, the presentation was to create that flexibility, and by minimizing some lot sizes, it wasn't to create the flexibility under the current plan, it was to create flexibility by reducing the minimum lot size, and that was rejected.
And, and maybe this is a better way with the question, so I remember you did bring it before us, or someone from Ivory Homes did, with the desire of making some smaller and some larger, so they could have more of those, and then the Planning Commission gave the recommendation, maybe taking out a couple lots, so you could do that as well. It looks like, at least with this layout, that you guys chose to, to keep more lots without that option, and I think the Planning Commission sort of leaned towards, we don't want the smaller sizes. So, so I guess the question more so is, how many three-car garages do we have in here currently, do you know?
I believe in the presentation, you had a, an exhibit that showed what the three-car capacity was right now, and I believe it was maybe nine or 10.
Okay.
About a third of these. But if you remember, that, the, the whole proposal was to reduce the lot size to create the variety, it wasn't to eliminate lots. I think that was clear in the meeting that we weren't
Yeah, I, I think, I think we just came with a potential proposal and another way to do it, and, and this is fine, this, this is in agreeance with the development agreement and everything else, so.
Yeah, I guess we just We would still like to entertain that in the future, but, but that was off the table from what we understood based upon that joint meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just know for the, for the pod itself, it said 6 to 10,000 was, I guess, the intention, so that's where I'm coming from, is what they're proposing versus what was, I think, the public's perception of what would happen with variety and the different lot sizes within the development overall, so.
Thank you. Any other comments in regards to what we have here?
I can say I do like the fence being down the hill.
I agree.
I agree.
Makes it a much better, a much nicer neighborhood than
And a much nicer feel, actually driving and, and being on the trails and everything else, I agree. And I guess the only other was staff report that I was looking at was item number nine, and just working with the Parks Department on providing access and trailheads. Is that, I guess I'm looking at this other than parcel A with that park over there, and providing any Parks Department, or is there any elaboration on, on what we're referencing there?
So a lot of these conditions, we had the original preliminary approval, it had like, a bunch of conditions, so a lot of these just get carried over, but there isn't really, there'll be access to the trail, let me go back to the, right in here, 'cause it's just, it's just north of where this is, but in this particular pod, there really isn't a, a trailhead or an access that we would be looking for.
Okay, so this is more encompassing to everything?
Yeah.
Okay.
The only other thing I would say on the conditions is on number 11.
Yes.
Under the plat, talks about the fencing, so just look at that.
Yeah, to me, I think, just because we are, I totally agree, it makes sense to do, but since we're removing a requirement, I think that should be something that needs to come back to show the value in why we are removing the fence.
And I also think item 11 needs to touch on the sidewalk.
Yep.
To be able to address the asphalt, wider path, that'll be a bike and running path potentially.
But I, I think leaving it open to the city and having that come back for approval for just that piece.
For just number 11, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, just number 11, have, have that piece come back with a landscaping plan and the trail, or whatever it is, with whatever width the city deems is the right width.
Number 8 under the site plan.
Yep.
So maybe just add that, like, come back to Planning Commission on that one. Yep. So it's not, yep.
So it's a potentially 8, and then adjusting 11 to allow for the like, wider path, the option for the city to implement.
You could also remove, well, you don't have to remove condition 9, they had their neighborhood meeting, so that's been met, but
Yeah.
I mean, you can leave it there.
So it sounds like there's a couple different options with adjusting this, when we make a motion.
Do you have a public hearing yet?
I have not, but that's the next item.
That's the next item, it's not this one.
So, so this time, I'll turn to the Planning Commission to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion on item 2.2 to approve, item 2.2 with staff's, sorry, they're opposites, so staff's 17 comments with an alteration to number 8 to state that provided a detailed landscaping plan for the detention pond and the open space next to Main Street to come back to Planning Commission for approval.
And are you, we're looking at adjustment on 11 just for the
11 is
On the plat.
On the other, the other motion.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
That's why I would say it's backwards.
Yeah.
There we go. Motion by, made by Adam?
I'll second.
And a second by Andy, and we'll call for a vote. Lauren?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Brody?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
And Andy.
Yes.
And then we'll move on to item 2.3, which is on for a public hearing, and we'll turn to city staff to begin it. If there's any more comments.
No, I mean, again, on this one, you're approving the preliminary plat, which is basically what you're seeing before you, the actual plat, but really no different than, we have received some comments today, and you'll probably have some comment in the hearing.
All right, thank you, Bryn. And then if there's any additional comments by the applicant, okay, and then I will at this time open the public hearing to the community. And if, when you come up, just state your name.
Hi, my name is Chad Danzy, and I live on 700 West Harriman Highway, so it's just a little bit more west of this development, and so a couple concerns I have, I'm not against the development, I think it's, it sounds great, but my concern is that Harriman City is allowing this phase to go forward without requiring the roads and parks to be completed between that Pod 4 development and Harriman Highway, just because how it's going to affect traffic. This is the first development, but there's gonna be a lot more development, and I just live, there's that circle right by Pod 20, so I live just across the road there. Yeah, and so we already have a lot of traffic, this is gonna cause a lot more traffic, so I just wanna make sure that the roads are being put in, that if you're taking that wall out, that they have to complete that park and area with the pod, because, and that it's not delayed, because obviously, there's gonna be a lot of construction there, and that's my biggest concern, it's just so those are done at the same time. And I think it should be included with this pod, not a separate thing, so.
Which road are you describing?
I'm talking about the, so along Harriman Highway, between Pod 4 and Harriman Highway, all that park area, if you're taking that height, that wall out, I think that
Can you move your hand around where he's describing, just to make sure
Oh, can I, does, oh, I didn't know that did that, there we go.
Yes.
So right along there, yeah.
This wall we've been talking about.
So that's, it would, it is planned and proposed to be currently with this subdivision?
But it is with this pod development, like with this, these 30 homes, is that right? Okay. 'Cause I, I mean, I didn't see that it was, it looked like it was not to be done with these 30 homes, but at a later date, and that road was to be done on a later date. It sounded like they were just doing the road here, I don't know if it'll let me do it, but where you go into Pod 4?
Over here.
Yep, that spot, but they weren't doing this whole road here, and that's where my concern is, I think it should all be done with that pod.
Okay.
So, for traffic reasons, and also because it's going to affect future development as well, and people that live around there, so that's about all I have, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Number 13.
Yeah.
And number 12.
And I may want to clarify, and the applicant's probably fine with that.
Well, what is in the MDA, right? It says per the MDA, does the MDA say the whole thing? Maybe we need
The MDA says you have to build the road adjacent to the phase
Adjacent to the phase.
That you're building.
Yeah, so that would include that.
But we might want to clarify just the timing.
Yeah.
So you're wearing the last site plan, you, 'cause you won't see all these recommendations, it did say, "Full improvements for 13050 South and 6850 West must be installed, including asphalt curb gutter sidewalk, landscape park strip" including asphalt, curb gutter, sidewalk, landscape, park strip, and street lighting."
And if there are any other comments or public hearings, then at this time, I'll close the public hearing and turn to the planning commission for any additional comments or a motion to be made.
So, you already did the other one, so I'm trying to figure out how we can amend that. I could do another 17. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 2.3 with staff's 16 requirements with an alteration to number 11. Excuse me. To leave this in, the entire sentence as it stands, and then put a big "or", submit a landscaping plan that the city can, that comes to the planning commission for a review and approval. So I still want to keep it there, or we have to come to an agreement on landscaping. And then number 17, that all construction along Harriman Highway will be completed before building permit.
Before what?
Building permits are pulled. At least along this phase.
Would you do permit or first occupancy?
Yeah, I was gonna say, should we put it with occupancy so they can be building it as they're building the home?
I'm okay with that.
I think the intent was they wanted to have a model home.
Before occupancy, so, yes, before occupancy.
Okay.
For use as a model home?
That's up to you.
No, I don't think so, because I think the intent is to make it safer. So I think the roadway needs to be built before that. That's in my motion, at least, is what I'm going to say.
Well, I was thinking for occupancy and use as a model home, but not for somebody to live in.
Well, at this point, we're making a motion, and then we can look if it's approved or not approved, or seconded. If it's not, then we can continue on and maybe make more comments at that point.
Can I clarify, Adam?
To find another motion.
You can clarify, yeah.
Do you mean from here, I guess here?
We're currently only approving Pod 4, so that's all I think I can state.
It's just the frontage there, okay, I just want to make sure we're...
The only other thing with Pod 4 is that park is located in Pod 4.
This one too, yeah.
Correct.
So do you mind, Adam, just repeating your motion?
Yeah.
That was a little messy.
All right, so, again, to make a motion to approve item, the 16 items with an alteration to number 11, that besides the requirement of constructing a six-foot fence after that entire statement, I don't really want to read the paragraph, put an "or" statement that requires the developer to come back with a landscaping plan or the wall. I'll be honest, I don't personally, I get the landscaping's a better plan, but I don't want to remove it until we come to agreement on that landscaping plan. So that's why I'm putting an "or" statement there. And then in number 17, to install roadway improvements along the length of Pod 4, along the Harriman Highway, prior to occupancy or use as a model home. So what I expect, so that's the end of the motion, but I'll kind of describe. The roadway to be built, the sidewalk, curb and gutter to be built, so that as traffic increases for viewing and occupying future homes in that area, it is safe for the residents of that area.
Motion made by Adam. Not while we're making the motion right now.
I will second that, actually.
And a second by Andy, and we will call for a vote. Andy?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Brody?
Uh, no.
Adam?
Yes.
And Lauren?
Uh, no.
So that actually passes with a split vote. But we will actually move on to item 2.4 at this time. And so item 2.4 is an update on the site plan for 229 units in Harriman Town Center, and it's the parkside townhomes, and we'll turn to city staff.
Sorry, we're just switching between presentations.
Want yours, or do you want Steve's? I have yours, Matt's first? Or yours first, you can do yours first?
Yeah, so can you switch over to the... Okay, so my presentation is really just going to focus on recommending how we are to use the design guidelines that have been adopted by the planning commission for the Harriman Town Center. As we mentioned in our work session previous to this meeting, the applicant has been working with the city management team to try and make some adjustments to the proposal that was initiated last year. And they feel like they have made a number of amendments, and they would like to re-engage the planning commission on this project. We anticipate bringing this, the applications, back to the planning commission in our September meetings. There's essentially, like we just experienced with the Ivory Homes development, there's a subdivision component and a site plan component. And there are two halves of the request that we're looking at tonight. One is a mixed-use project, and then the other is a series of townhomes and condominiums that are being proposed by Edge Homes. So although there is a development agreement and/or a planned development with these design guidelines, there is also the underlying zone, which is this purple area where city hall is right now, our town center, and it's the MU2, it's a mixed-use zone. So the design guidelines essentially are the leading document, but you'll notice in this yellow text off to the right, it says that these Harriman Town Center guidelines may be more restrictive than existing regulations. However, it does not supersede or modify any existing codes, ordinance, or regulations. In the event of a conflict or discrepancy, or for issues not addressed herein, the appropriate regulations and codes shall take precedence, and the most restrictive standards shall apply. So we're balancing, we're measuring this proposal against the MU2 zoning regulations as well as the design guidelines. Now, the left-hand side of the screen, again, I know this is really small for the audience, but it's talking about principles and guidelines. And as we look at the, I've got a series of slides here. And I had inserted a bunch of images relative to the project itself, but the applicant is actually going to go through and walk you through the proposal. So I'm just going to flip through this really quick and get to the design guidelines. The design guidelines have a district diagram, and the district diagram identify which standards apply to various phases of development. This, these two projects right now are within the heart of this plan, this maroon-shaped or colored kind of U-shaped center area. And it's the mixed-use town center. Now, in our previous work meeting, I had a couple of copies of both the mixed-use town center design guidelines and the single-family and multifamily design guidelines, and we're going to talk about that. There was an understanding or an intent that we were going to change this district diagram, but we've, anyway, we still need to kind of formally do that. So here is the section of the design guidelines relative to the mixed-use portion of the development. And across the top of the screen, so in your materials, you see the principles. And essentially, the design guidelines are what's below, here in this numbered section. And the idea is that the developer is, kind of picks and chooses from these components. They choose enough components so that they're satisfying the principles. Another way of looking at this, that we've been, as we've been engaged with the developer, is if they choose one of these components, then there are sometimes metrics that are provided. So for example, if you choose to have a window, which of course they're going to have, in the mixed-use town center, there's a metric in here that says that that should have a four-inch recess so that you create shadow lines, and that the walls tend to have more massing, so that the window is not just simply on the skin of the surface, it's actually recessed. You see that in a lot of very traditional forms. You see that on this building, for example. So if you choose a component to try to satisfy the principles, then you should be following the metrics of the design guideline. And it's broken down into various sections. So this is the site plan section, building siting and urban open space. Again, this is part of site planning, vehicle circulation. Then there's an architecture section, and they break it down into various components, building, massing, towers, and corners. Corners are really heavily emphasized in the town center, saying that's an important feature in the project. Storefronts, so again, this is mixed-use, so we're definitely anticipating having commercial storefronts around the U-road, and as you know, there's four mixed-use buildings that you'll be looking at a little closer tonight. Arcades, colonnades, and trellises. This is something that we actually flagged as maybe is not an element that's really been present in this project, and we've encouraged that they look at this and see if there's opportunities to include them. There's a whole page just on this one section. And, you know, if you're not choosing any of these kind of kit of parts, it's kind of hard to achieve any of these principles. Now, one of the challenges of this design guideline is, you'll notice that there's no scoring system. There's no, like, a lot of, kind of, design-focused review projects in other cities. They'll have like a code that says, okay, in order to get approval, you have to achieve 100 points. And you get so many points for doing certain things. And here, there's no, there's no structure like that. It just basically says in the introductory paragraph that the principles is what we're striving to achieve, and you achieve those principles by doing these design guidelines, by following these guidelines. So your job as commissioners will be making a decision whether or not the applicant has met the principles by properly employing a sufficient number or complying with the design guide sufficiently. Oannings and cannibes, building materials. They have provided some building sample materials to staff, and in the future, we can actually bring those physical materials for you to take a look at. You can handle them and see the coloring and what kind of quality they are. Landscaping. Site furnishings, this was something that we've asked the applicant to specify where on the plans they want to locate site furnishings. They've indicated that they are willing and prepared to match what has already been started here in the town center. If you go outside, you'll see benches, waste receptacles, recycling receptacles. We obviously have a standard streetlight, bollards, you know, all those different things. The applicant is saying they're willing to match. We're just asking that they actually identify where they're going to go, so we can plan for them, it's not an afterthought. And then in the multifamily section, you'll see the same thing, or very similar. They'll have different standards, because it's for a different product type. But you'll see, again, building siting and open space, that was another similar topic that happened in the mixed-use portion. And you'll see, this is color-coded, so everything, when you're looking at your materials, all you have to do is focus on these two sections. There's a number of other sections in the design guidelines that don't specifically apply. There's also a signage section, and none of the signage has been proposed at this point in time. So when the commercial development really gets going, and they attract a tenant, and they want to do signage, we'll ask them to come back and actually show you the sign package, and we'll bring that back for you at a later date. Architecture, now, one of the key things about this project is it's, the design guidelines are also based on traditional forms and conventional forms. And I really have encouraged, I think I mentioned this in the memo on the Edge Homes product, that we want to be clear as to which standards we're applying. And if you choose, the intent is not to choose some of each. You really want to be squarely in either the traditional form or the conventional form. So for example, my initial review of this project is it looks like the buildings up along the U-road, the condos that are squarely up along the U-road, those would probably more fit, more accurately fit the traditional building typology. Whereas the townhomes, the front-load and the rear-load townhomes that Edge Homes is proposing, would probably be more conventional. But we just need to make sure we are consistently applying. Again, you don't want to choose, well, we've satisfied some of traditional and some of conventional. It actually weakens the product. You really want to be squarely in one or the other. And then we need to consistently apply those standards as we go through all of these. Roof elements, recess and covered porches. There are some recesses, but covered porches seem to be more prominent. And you'll notice, this is one of those examples where there's actual metrics associated with the covered porch. So it says that the area of that covered porch should be 48 square feet, that it should have a depth of five feet, so that you have usable space outside of columns and railings, and that it actually, you step up to that porch. It has a height above grade of 18 inches, which is preferable. So that's, again, where we're saying there's some metrics that are applied in these sections. Patios, balconies, decks, facade articulation. There's some sections in here that talk about having four-sided architecture, trying to treat all four sides of the building. Window locations and orientation. This section is actually interesting, because you'll notice that it's all the traditional form. And I don't know if there was a conscious decision to say whether you're traditional or conventional. We only have the traditional standards here, so I, there's a little bit of a, I'm not sure what we're going to do if we measure the conventional, because there's no conventional standards for windows. The doors section does not seem to be, it seems to be independent. It doesn't seem to matter whether it's traditional or conventional. Landscaping, there's, you noticed on the Edge Home materials that we included in your packet, there's quite a bit of landscaping information already provided, and there's a lot of guidelines in here relative to the landscaping. There are no parking lots in any of the Edge Home materials. At least, not that I really understood as parking lots. The parking for the condos seem to be a little undefined. We need a little more clarity on the condo parking, but it seems like every unit essentially has like tuck-under or garage parking with short driveways. So, any questions on kind of how to use that? We'll make sure that everybody has copies, we'll send you electronic copies of the design guidelines. We provided some printed copies last year when we were looking at this, but we can, I think we did it maybe eight and a half by 11, and I think the 11 by 17 that we showed you tonight is a little easier to use, so we can make sure that you all have that if you want it. Again, any questions on how to use the guidelines as you're reviewing this project over the next month or so? And then, we mentioned that we really want to bring this back for further discussion and presentation next month, so feed me any of your concerns throughout the next few weeks as you're reviewing this. Just go ahead and send them to me. We'll compile your comments, we'll forward them to the applicant, so they can be aware of those ahead of the meeting.
All right, thank you, Michael.
I know I kind of mashed up both of those projects together, I apologize. I just went ahead and addressed both of them, so.
That's all right, thank you so much. And if the applicant's here, if they want to come up and just state their name, then go in greater detail, I guess.
All right, I'm Matt Watson, representing HTC Communities, and we are excited to be here. It's great to be back in front of you again, it's been... It's been about nine months since the last time that we addressed you in the work meeting and brought some plans and some architectural plans in front of you. And so we've been excited to get back with you again. And as we've been working with the staff, we just want to make sure that we're going in the direction that the planning commission would have us go. And Nope. So it was, it was great that he, that Mike covered both projects. I'm going to start out by kind of giving the overall picture and kind of talking about both projects, kind of high level. And then I'll talk more in detail about the mixed-use portion of it. And then Steve Maddox with Edge Homes will talk more in detail about the residential portion of it, so. So again, the overall Harriman Town Center, this is the development that again, as we talked about in the work meeting, have been working on for over a decade. Brett mentioned, we've been working on this for about 15 years. That starts obviously prior to approvals. And getting approved in 2007, yeah, 2007. We started Main Street and did the Rec Center. That was kind of the first phase of the town center. Then a few years ago, we went into greater detail in this core area of the town center as Harriman City was preparing to do their plans for City Hall and for the Jalen Crane Park. And so we worked with the city to kind of go into a little bit more detail on that. And then since then, beginning of last year, we went into even greater detail on specifically the four, if you want to go back, the four buildings that are mixed-use in Pod 12B and 14. And then also this residential portion that's Pods 20, 32, 31, 23 and 24. So we went, started in the beginning of last year, really drilling down into the details of that. Started working with staff in June and going through those plans and getting their comments and making revisions. And then again, meeting with you guys in November. So that was kind of the timeline there. In that meeting, we talked about some of the concerns that Planning Commission had and some of the feedback that we got from you about pedestrian connectivity and the open space. Talked about the interface with the existing units. So obviously, this project kind of has two faces, two parts. It has that part that faces inside to the City Hall and to the park. And then you have that part that faces outside to the existing residents, existing homes that are on the outside of this phase. So what you're seeing here is what we brought to you back in November. So I just wanted to bring that back up because obviously it's been quite a while to kind of refresh on that site plan. So then if you'll go to the next slide, this is the current site plan for the project. And again, the, Brent, if you want to point to the two mixed-use buildings on the west side and two mixed-use buildings on the east side, so that's, that's one of the applications. And then you have the residential portion on the south side, and that's another application. So you can see the future commercial developments on both the east and west side to the north will be something that will come in at a later date. So to give you an idea of what the scope of these applications are in these phases. So you can see on this project, and Steve will go into, like I said, more detail on the residential, and I'll kind of cover the mixed-use. The mixed-use, there are 14 residential units per building on those mixed-use. And there's 9,900 square feet of storefront space per building on those mixed-use buildings. So total of 56 units with 39,700 square feet of commercial retail space between those four buildings. The multifamily portion on the south end has, is made up of 259 units. So if you want to actually go back up two slides, Brett kind of talked about this in the meeting as some of the shifts and changes a little bit with the land use. So Pod 14 and Pod 20 were split like 32 and 31, basically kind of split in half, east side, west side, with the, with the east side of Pod 14 being that mixed-use and the west side in the back being multifamily. Pods 12A and 12B were also the mixed-use with 11A and 11B being just multifamily like Pods 32, 31, 23 and 24. And so those shifts that he's talking about is how 14, Pod 14 now wraps the corner, covers Main Street as well as Black Locust. And then on 11A and 11B completely making those mixed-use or even 100% commercial. And that's kind of those shifts there. So 20, 32, 31, 23 and 24 have always been multifamily residential there. And again, now if you want to go back to the current site plan. So talking about the two, kind of the two sides, and I think this is something that we had talked about in that work meeting as well, is addressing that existing homes on the exterior and how we address the interior. Mike talked about that traditional and conventional development patterns where that pattern along the Black Locust and Fort Harriman Parkway, so those that are facing the park are a traditional pattern, as he mentioned, where that outside two-story townhomes, the front load and the rear load kind of follow more of a conventional development pattern. And so there's, there isn't anything in the guidelines about having to do one or the other. And we, and again, from the beginning, knowing that this project kind of has these two sides, we knew that we would be way more traditional on the inside just because of how we are, how we are meeting and working with the City Hall, with the commercial buildings, with the commercial mixed-use buildings. That is just, we knew that's going to be traditional. But as we go on the outside and we're interfacing with, with two, with single-story and two-story, single-family detached homes and a few two-story townhomes, interfacing there as well, right? You know, addressing them rather than having some towering, very traditional building right in the face of a, of a single-story Rambler. This kind of transitions from that inner, more urban to that outer area where it's not so urban, if that makes sense. So then we can go to the next slide and talk about the number of units and the, and to kind of give you a background as well. So again, this project's been going on for over a decade. And this project is, is the town center as a whole. The MU2 zone was actually written for the Harriman Town Center project. So there wasn't a zone in the city that really worked well for this kind of development when we brought it forward. And so we worked with staff at that time to develop a mixed-use zone. And then that was the zone that was, was put in this place along with the other approvals that we did for the master plan and land use plan development agreement, et cetera. So the MU2 zone is, is put in place for this. Now, one of the, the comments would be how that's always been interpreted by staff and Planning Commission. So we were required as a conditional, as a condition of that approval to meet a minimum of five and a half units per acre, which is obviously well below the 10 units per acre allowed by the zone. Again, this is an overall project. What we're bringing to you is a phase. So that part of the mixed-use zone requires that that land use plan be done to indicate where those, where the density, where the units will be placed. And so from the beginning, that master plan was presented and approved to show, okay, where are we going to have apartment units? Where are we going to have single-family attached units? And where's single-family detached? Where's the commercial? Where's the mixed-use? That really outlines where everything's going, right? And so as we bring things phase by phase, we may bring in a phase that is all residential, but it could be an apartment phase, which actually is 22 units to the acre. But it does not exceed the zone because the Harriman Town Center is under 10 units per acre. This is, this is a phased development over time. And that master plan and land use plan really indicate where that density is going. And so what staff and Planning Commission have looked at as applications have brought in, been brought in over the last decade is, okay, here's the land use plan. This was single-family detached. What, those densities that are being proposed in this phase meet that, meet that master plan and that land use plan. And so that's what we're doing, doing here as well. So this gives you all the, you know, number of single-family lots, multifamily lots, approval to date, 1,776. And this shows the two applications that we have in currently with the 56 units on the mixed-use and the 259 on the residential portion. So 315 altogether. And that would be 2,091 units and our gross density would be 5.7 units per acre. So we've, we've met our, our condition on our minimum and we've not exceeded our density on the zone. The other thing, it's not on this slide, but I guess while talking about numbers, to talk about parking, one of the things in the MU2 zone that was also put in place was a 5% reduction as well as it could be, could be looked at and studied for any kind of further reduction there. But, but the parking standard for residential is two spaces per unit. So one of the things on both of these applications, on our, on our residential portion of that mixed-use, we're meeting the two spaces per unit. We're actually in both cases, the mixed-use and the residential exceeding the parking requirements, even exceeding the, without the 5% reduction. So on the mixed-use, we have two, two spaces per residential unit. And then we have four spaces per thousand square feet of, of the floor space there. So that's, that's kind of the parking. So again, like I said, I'll kind of go over the mixed-use just in a little bit more detail. Show you guys the elevations, the site plans, the landscaping. It really hasn't changed a lot from what we previously brought you in terms of the site plan. Probably the biggest change to the site plan was how we grouped and where we placed the garages. We did get comments from staff to try to basically locate those garages as much behind the buildings as we could so that obviously as you, as you go down Black Locust and Fort Harriman Parkway, you know, I mean, basically the, the mixed-use buildings screen those, those garage buildings in the back there. So we've, so we've grouped them together and then, and then located them more centrally in there. And this shows the landscaping plan. Another comment that we received from staff was to take the two mixed-use buildings and, and create a greater distance between the two. So have a smaller setback from the private road entrances to create a greater space between them. And then with that space, and you can see in the landscaping plan, so to have, have paver areas with benches, with shade trees, and then obviously other plants and shrubs in those planter beds there to make that an area that's, can, can function well as another seating area. And then, and then obviously we've got the parking islands and the trees in the, in the parking islands. And then we have our dumpsters kind of centrally located. Those would be trash enclosures for both the residents and the mixed-use, the, the commercial tenants in the bottom and just the landscaping around those enclosures. So that's the west side, and then you can see the east side is, is similar. And then if you want to go on, so this, this shows the, the front area of those retail spaces and the amount of patio area. Now, obviously, we don't know all the tenants. You know, we don't know what the uses will be. And so, you know, we may have some restaurants, sandwich shops, ice cream shops, whatever, that would have a desire to have those outdoor patio areas and seating. We may have others that are more, you know, we might have a bike shop that may desire more, you know, bike racks or a clothing store that might want to be able to put, you know, sales racks out on occasion, out in some areas. So this really just shows those areas that can be used. It also shows how access can be, can be made. This road is fairly flat. It's only about, it's just under one and a quarter percent. But anytime you have a large building like this that is flat, obviously, any kind of drop over that road is going to create some kind of, kind of variance. And so here, you know, we've got a step in our building so we have a flat area and an ADA route for all the access of the units. And then, but we will pick up a single step as we go down the road because of the slight grade of the road. But this just shows, even with those access points, the amount of area that we have for exterior uses that the tenants would, would desire. I want to go to the next slide. This is just the, the site plan, which is similar to what you, what you saw in the landscaping plan. Go ahead and again, the east side. So here's the data, east and west side. Again, each building has 14 units in it, so there's 28 on the east side, 28 on the west side. That's the building area that you see there, 21, 631. So that's like the actual footprint between two buildings. But the, again, the floor area is 9,900 of actual, you know, retail, leasable floor space that they have. You can see the garage building square footage and the landscaping and the total areas on each side with just giving, just kind of giving a reference of a density on just those areas. Again, the project as a whole, we're at 5.7 units per acre. The parking spaces required, again, as I mentioned before, two per unit and four per thousand on the, on the commercial space. So you can see that does show the 5% reduction at 130, but you can see the spaces that we're providing, both, both on-street parking lot and garage spaces. So we have 154 on the west side and 138 on the east side. And again, as those areas will expand with additional commercial, so there's still the ability to use some of those stalls. So we're not, you know, we may be able to pick, may be able to make use of these stalls and not just have extra. Because one of the requirements of the MU2 zone is that we actually don't overpark it. So we have to make sure that we meet that requirement.
Quick question on your street parking spaces. I'm assuming that's mainly intended for the commercial? Is there going to be prohibit the tenants that are there, that are for the residences?
So what we have
Not using that space?
Right. So we're open to working with the city in terms of how, how the city would like to approach that and sign that, whether it's no overnight parking or we're open. The garages that we've provided, basically every unit will have a single-car garage. And then the other space is an open space in the back. So we're not, we're not at this time looking to mark off residential spaces in the back reserved unless we have to. We feel like with the mix of uses, we'll be able to overlap. You know, you know, we're providing enough spaces for them separately. So in doing that, the resident will always be able to find a space. I mean, if we, if we had to, we could identify residential spaces in the back for that other space for the unit, but we'd rather leave it open because you will at sometimes have, you know, Fort Harriman Days or other big events where maybe you want to take advantage of being able to use that parking. And if it's, if it's restricted to, to that resident only, then that might not
Well, yeah, exactly. You've got the park and you've got other things that may be happening here. I don't want to be taken up. They don't want to be taken up by all the residents.
And, and when the city was planning through, I think with EDA, I think was the architecture firm they used, as they were working with, looking at City Hall and Jalen Crane Park, you know, they took into account all the angled parking that was fronting, um, you know, on the inside of Black Locust and Fort Harriman Parkway. They took into that, those spaces in account with the parking lots that are also interior. So none of the exterior parking was used in kind of planning and providing for the park or the city hall. So all that exterior. So really that opens that up for those mixed uses.
But it was originally for mixed use. It wasn't, I mean, what I'm talking about is there's residential now, which changes the dynamics of what that's going to be used for on the inner part. Because originally it was mixed use all the way around.
It was not. It was always residential on the south end.
The horseshoe was all mixed use, wasn't it?
No, the south end was residential.
Okay.
The zone was always mixed use?
Yeah.
Yeah, the zone of the whole town center, three hundred and seventy acres has always been mixed use, yeah.
You didn't plan on mixed use in every one of those buildings, is what you're saying?
What's that?
You didn't plan on mixed use in every one of those buildings?
No. So the master plan and land use plan always had multifamily attached along the park. And the mixed use was, was, was more central to where the, like where City Hall is.
Okay.
So those, those spaces would not be, the spaces that are not in front of the mixed use but in front of the residential, wouldn't be designated residential. So anybody coming to the park or someone that wants to visit that tenant could, could park there, right? And again, it, we're open to the whole, if the city wants to do no overnight parking or however they want to approach-
I guess in my mind, I'm thinking, because we have right now, if we go down to the district, we have all that residential there and the large parking lot that's supposed to be used commercially. And, um, the amount of individuals that park trailers and individual car parking is pretty heavy there. And so that's a little bit of my fear of what's going to occur is it becomes an RV lot unless it's restricted.
You're talking about the parking behind, not the parking on the-
Yeah, the parking that's, that's closer to the park is what I'm talking about.
Yeah, the angled parking, I mean, you would never be able to park a long vehicle in the-
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I understand that. I just understand also that over in the district, they take up three or four stalls to do that. And so they just park sideways. And so it, it's obviously something that we'll have to figure out a solution to. But I did have a question on, for instance, your type D fiveplex. So in looking at-
So that's the residential, is that right?
That, that is residential.
So I'll have, so again, like I said, I wanted to touch like more in detail on the mixed use and then I'll have Steve present the residential.
Okay, that's fine.
That's all right. So I, I just wanted to start instead of the residential, just to give that overall picture of the Harriman Town Center and also update you on the, the number of units and just kind of that history and background as we are the master developer.
And we appreciate that, Matt, we really do.
But yeah, so we'd be happy to talk again more in detail on the residential here in a second.
So is now the time to make comments on the mixed use building?
Yeah, that, so I, I mean, let's look through the, I've got some elevations-
It's sort of out of order, that's why-
Yeah, no, you're totally good. So I've got some elevations and things to show you and I'd be happy to take any comments or questions on the mixed use. That'd be great.
We're really doing item two point five? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what it looks like Matt jumped into.
Yeah.
If, if you're okay with switching the order, Bryn, or do we need to go back to two point four?
Oh, because parks items first?
It's discussion only.
Discussion, okay. So, so that's okay if we jump to two point five discussion only? The motions will be made later. For continuing.
So I'll just show you the elevations and kind of discuss. Again, like I said, um, I think the, the idea and what we have showed you before hasn't changed a lot, but we have, um, made a lot of changes that comments, um, comments that staff has given us on the elevations in terms of, um, stepping materials, um, some of the other features on the buildings. These are the floor plans so you can see, you could, you could have seven spaces here, but obviously we could have a tenant that comes in and wants two or three, right? Somebody might, uh, doing a restaurant may want at least two of those spaces to combine together. So we really, one of the purposes for limiting the building to a single step is to allow for the most flexibility as those tenants come. Because, you know, we don't, last thing we want to do is have a restaurant come and say, sorry, we've, we've stepped our building every single break here and now you've got to try to figure out how you're going to do, uh, your restaurant floor plan in a space that has a, has a drop in it, which becomes problematic for, for ADA and everything else like that. So again, just trying to keep with one step to make the most flexibility for the users that we'll have coming in there. And this is the second story floor plan to show you the residential. There's a mix of two and three bedroom units. And there's, um, basically range from eleven hundred square feet to we have over twelve hundred square feet on those units. And the third story is just the same as the, as the second story, so.
Now, now, Matt, when I look at some elevations, like for instance on this page, so do you actually have patios on the second and third floor?
So the-
In the back?
Yes, on the back.
On the back, sorry?
Yep, on the back side, yes.
Uh, how large are those?
So I'd probably have to ask my architect. I can't remember. Yeah, so-
Back here?
Fifteen feet?
Yeah, so you can see there's that fifteen foot mark and then obviously you do have space that juts out into that, but then you also have patio that goes out further than that.
Have you guys looked at any trellises or any additional items to place on these areas?
So that, we could, we could, we would actually, you know, not have a problem with entertaining that.
Because I know in some of our design guidelines, it talks about arcades, colonnades, trellises, recessed covered porches. We also have the awnings, canopies and a little bit more of that. My mind goes to, um-
The awnings and canopies are more towards the retail space?
Exactly, that's what I think of there.
Which, which we definitely see our tenants coming in and wanting to do awnings and canopies. And, and again, as mentioned with the signage, like the signage and everything like that would come back. So obviously we've provided places for them to put signage and they can also do awnings as well.
Because a lot of my thought goes to, um, just the ability to help this keep a good flow throughout the year with the weather. I mean, the heat in the summer for shade, and then also in the wintertime, the snow. Because I know there's a lot of times where if you choose to go to certain shopping areas and you're walking outside, you choose not to go. Because it's not, it's not an area that's really conducive or, or inviting and that. And, and I think with what we're trying to plan here is we do want it to be a little more inviting. Maybe some, some pathways that come through from the residential into this commercial that may be more covered like a colonnade and maybe some more walkways with, with either covered completely because it's a little more inviting. Just, just some of that thing in the design guidelines is a lot of what I thought about.
So how we've, how the staff has asked us to, to pull those buildings apart, that's definitely something that we could, could look at incorporating in there. Even looking at some of the trellis features that are in the park, the way those structures are done.
Tying those into it, I think would be awesome.
Yeah.
I think the, uh, the biggest impact will be along the commercial at the front. As far as if we can get the colonnades and the, uh, those elements there, the covered, it just makes it that much easier to hang, uh, heating elements, makes it that much easier to provide cover, uh, to get that-
It's inviting year round?
Yeah. And I think, again, a lot of it is just flexibility in our tenants. Again, we don't, you know, we don't know who's all going to come in here and so providing that flexibility where, again, where they want awnings, sales racks, they may want, if it's a tenant that doesn't have, that doesn't want to have tables, cafe tables or something, they may have a desire to put more, um, planters, above-grade planters in those areas.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I recognize the need for flexibility, but yeah, we need to have some type of requirement or something like that, that it is covered to some point. You know, maybe it, it is when the tenants come in, but we need to work to make sure that there is some type of-
Yeah, and so we do have, so if you go to the, go to the floor plans real quick and then we can look at the elevations. Because we do have, go back one. So you can see like the columns on there and you can see those dash lines where those are protrus- those are overhangs of, of different elements, whether they're like physical, hard awnings. So if you keep going down to the elevations-
But if we could make those, you know, sixteen feet deep and run across the front of the building, that would really engage-
And it still enables the flexibility for the tenants. It's, it's not limiting the flexibility of them wanting to pull out some of their merchandise or making a sitting area out there or it, it, what it, what it does in at least a lot of my mind is it meets some of the design guideline that, that, that couldn't, could be further emphasized.
Yeah, and I think the, the direction that we've gone and is kind of the direction that the, the city has wanted us to go. And Brett mentioned South Lake, Texas, that, that they took a look at. And I've got actually some pictures at the end of the slide and you can see that. But basically that kind of historic main street, right? That kind of this building was built and then this building was built right next to it, that kind of look. And so that's really where we have gone with this and, and with staff. And again, that kind of idea and what we've seen on those historical main streets and, um, like in South Lake, Texas. And so that's kind of what's driven how these, how these function on the front. And they do have, like you can see on CE and G all have those, um, those covered areas that come out.
Can you show us the real pictures? Can we go to those?
Yeah. The, the ones from like South Lake?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I'll be honest, with this feeling a little more institutional or larger, like a commercial product, I, I actually think the color is more what we, we need to see.
Yeah, so keep going down the very, the, they'll be at the very, very end. In fact, if you wanted to jump out and jump to the end, there's pictures of the South Lake.
Well, I was hoping that, that you actually had this. I was going to say, I'd like to see this.
So you want to see Adam?
Yes.
Okay, they want to see these.
Oh, okay.
I didn't know you even had these. I'm going through the black and white photos trying to visualize it in my mind and-
Can we look at the front of?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I was actually going to say, Matt, in the future, can you bring these? And apparently you already have them, so, yeah. Thank you.
I feel like you've been here once or twice.
I mean, again, this is, I mean, I think the mixed use we've even been working on-
For a while.
Yeah, quite a bit.
Yeah.
Longer and, and many of you have seen these over, over time as well.
And for instance, with this, um, there's a walkway through the middle of this section? Is that correct or no? I can't really tell with how it, it curves in. Is there a walkway that goes through this mixed use or no?
Yeah, so there's a walkway between the two buildings.
Yeah. So, so at least the part that I'm looking at, there, there is some recess areas. I do, I do take note of that. There is even areas where you could put canopies and, and different options like that. The, the thing that, that I'm worried about is that, that there won't be, um, some sense of, of flow there or it, it'll have a feel where it's like, yeah, I really can't walk this area in the wintertime and feel comfortable because it's just not what it needs to be right now. Just, it doesn't, it doesn't invite you in a sense of limiting the effects that the weather will have on certain days or, and so, uh, that's what I'm sort of missing, especially with the design guidelines that I, I think have a lot of options when it comes to these colonnades and trellises and arcades and just a lot of what I think that was originally put in there for was the protection against the weather. That's how I really look at it.
So if you go back one or forward one, I don't know which way to step, forward, I guess. That, you know, for me, I actually like how you're pulling in a lot of the park elements on the back.
I do like the back.
What I wish we could do, I'll be honest, I like the back more than the front. So, so what I'm trying to say is I think if we could pull some elements, like I, I think the amount of different pockets and, uh, I don't know, texture that you see on this-
Yeah, let's jump to the pictures of-
I wish you could see that on the front.
Yeah, jump to the pictures of South Lake real quick.
But I think even pulling in some of those trellises might be a benefit in the front as well.
Yep, keep going, there you go. So, I mean, you can see just like our, and on one, renderings are, are kind of hard. Sometimes they don't, they make, don't do, really do a good job. So, you know, you want to try to show it true to life, but you, you know, if you show the trees like they're, they're going to be, you, you, you can see here like in this picture, you don't really see much of the building, right? But you can kind of get an idea looking through those trees a little bit from the tops and the bottoms. You know, just kind of that variation in that kind of historic main street. And you can see like that awning there is like awnings that we would have. Again, your, your trees actually provide a lot of that canopy.
Yeah.
You know?
At least in the summertime.
So, so for me, I guess, I was envisioning larger canopies than just, I was picturing more sit-down canopy-
So was I.
Covered areas. That, that's what I had, yeah, outdoor dining or-
You go ice skating, then you go across and you want to sit outside and have hot chocolate and there's a heater out there and it's covered.
So, so I was picturing in my mind a little bit more of, you know, you go get your ice cream inside the store, you walk outside and you eat it outside the store. Kind of, it's kind of feel.
Right.
And, and so I, in my mind, I was picturing a little more substantial depth there.
Yeah, and this is-
Almost to the curb line, almost.
What's that?
Bring that almost to the curb.
Yeah, and we've, we've had those discussions early on with the city as well. The city did not want us to go into the public right away, which doesn't mean we can't extend it further than some of those that we're showing. But you also have the trees to contend with. I mean, there's a lot going on there as well.
And we want some separation from the cars, which I think that's some of what the trees are supposed to, to do, provide as well.
But you also, I mean, this is a sidewalk that people can, can walk along, you know, all the way past these businesses to the other area. So there's also that walkway that's still open.
But it, but it looks like the walkway is about eight feet.[1598.28]
Yeah.
And then the, which I think that's ample. I don't, I'm not really worried about the walkway. I guess I'm more, what's the distance? Maybe your architect can share us in between.
So go to the patio.
The walkway and the business.
Yeah, go to the patio exhibit. It varies a little bit because the frontage does actually vary of those buildings.
And that's why I think I like the back view a little bit, because you have that recess in where, you know, if you can imagine that that's where the building comes out for the floor, and then there's more of a seating area at the next pod, and then it pulls out. And that's that's, I think, why I'm liking the back myself, where it's coming in more drastic and out.
Yeah. And so I'm just showing like the like the South Lake and everything. I mean, even early on, we had renderings of the town center of what it was. And it was that historic main street.
Straight flat.
Where very traditional, right? It's again, back to that whole design guidelines and the traditional development pattern. Keep going to the patio.
For me, I think the town center has varied so much that there isn't really a defined theme anymore. And and I think, and I'm not an architect, so I'm not trying to say that I I know the right solution, but it feels like we need to be a little more kind of blended between the two than just a traditional feel for for me.
So what?
But but I don't know how to make that happen.
I've been saving my comment for a minute here.
Don't save it.
Don't save it. All right. Well, let's go to the elevations. And I think the, because it would the.
Well, did you want to look at this this patio area? You can see how it varies there.
So it's basically 16 feet at the most, maybe 20, right in front of that major area. Most of your seating areas are maybe 12 feet. You got a little bit bigger one over on the corner, and I get that.
But if we had some partial covering over these, it would do a lot for the space to engage people as they're using it.
Okay. I appreciate that feedback, yeah.
On the overall elevations, I think, if we can, I don't know if we can go to those, Bren.
These are the colored ones.
These right here. These are, these are great. I think in general, the the building form is is great, is doing a lot. The type is great. And so I think these buildings are doing well that way. But I think there's almost too much going on. Having, you know, eight different facades in one building is a lot. And I would think if you could reduce that down to maybe even three, that might feel more traditional than what's, this is almost trying too hard. I think if you could reduce that and then have that engagement at the street level, then it would do a lot to improve, you know, the the experience for the patrons.
Right.
Which might be why the back one has less of, has less of that, right? It's less variation. So it feels.
I think we need to have it have a feel of engagement outside, like you're saying, because we have the park that has a high engagement with music and different activities. And we have the skating or the ice skating and the water. And it's out, it's a big outdoor engagement type area already across the street from it. So.
You know, as a comparison, when you look at the building we're sitting in, you know, it has, you know, two wings that have their their facade and a center facade. And it functions well as a traditional building, or a traditional look. And so there's not as much going on. So I would say it's it's almost, it's just trying too hard. An example of that, if it's if it's not done right, is the about 7th East and 9400 South, there's a strip mall, which has a whole bunch of different little facades all the way through it. I don't know if you've seen that one, but we want to make sure we avoid that.
Yeah. And I think like, you know, seeing those pictures of South Lake, you can see kind of the model and where city is kind of.
And South Lake has done it fairly well. I think one of the differences there is they're only two stories tall. And so I think to get the proportions correct, if we go with less, we're gonna have a little better feel to it. So and so my phrase for for you tonight, Adam, less is more.
Yeah, okay. Good with that.
One thing I'm thinking over, just looking over the general plan, these phases is, you know, the future of Harriman. Like, I see this as a cornerstone, definitely for our community. And it makes sense to me to have kind of the mixed use go throughout the whole U shape, all the way around, with more mixed use, you know, restaurant, retail kind of stuff, as this, you know, as Harriman grows. I think having all these residential housing so close to the park is gonna cause a lot of problems long term, with people fighting for parking as we have major events. And it just seems to me a central gathering place for our community. And, yeah, I guess that's what I'd say about it.
Yeah, the balance, the balance there is providing the right amount of retail space, right? We don't want to have vacant spaces. And, you know, so it's, it's that balance of getting, providing enough that we get those uses that we want and that are gonna add to what's already here. And going like, kind of, you know, to Commissioner Ferguson's comment, less is more, you know, we could put in 100 million square feet of of space. And how, and is that gonna be provided? Are we gonna have a lot of vacant spaces? We don't want to have vacancy, right?
Yeah, I get that part of it. So.
So providing the right amount of of space there.
Yeah. But what I'm thinking of is like, you know, 20, 30 years down the road, where this could be a a great gathering place if there's a lot of condos.
But we also have to look at also is what has transpired with retail. I mean, look at 30 years ago, where we we were putting up strip malls everywhere.
Mall of retail seems to be more sustainable at this point. But what the one, the one comment I have on it and is, I I'm okay with the residential of where it's at. The the thing that I worry about is the flow as it goes around that horseshoe. Is it going to have this feel when you look at it, when you're looking all around, that it is consistent? Or is it like, okay, we have this nice feel of these front units that are multi-use, commercial, and then all of a sudden it looks completely different on the other side where it's residential? And that's where my fear comes in.
Talking condos?
The condos. Is is that, my fear is it doesn't have this flow, because you are in the middle of this, at these parks and at the park, and and then you're at the commercial. And if it doesn't have a good flow all the way around that is a little more consistent, I think it it could look like it's sort of just put together with, it looks very different, like, oh, yeah, these don't really fit together. Like, like, we have a couple different areas in the city that feel that way. I I I'm more worried about the consistency as it goes around. I'm perfectly fine with residential where it is and the commercial. I do like the commercial aspect of a little more covered, a little more, this huge feel of everything can be outside. Now, granted, some commercial will say, you're inside, that's what I do. And and that's fine. But the option of being like, we can go hang out outside, we can just linger, it 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 has to feel all the way around, which is where my mind keeps going to. How do we make it more weather friendly year round, which I think goes back to those colonnades and arcades and trellises and everything else. But but my worry is with the residential just having, I I would almost prefer it look somewhat similar even as it goes around.
The only thing with the similar, because we we had those same discussions with staff, is, again, I, you know, Commissioner Ferguson's comment of, if if you did take what we have in these four mixed-use buildings and go all the way around that, are we are we doing the same thing of?
I I don't want them to look the same.
No, not the same.
I just, I just don't want to.
Some of the same elements.
Yeah. I I just don't want to get it towards here, and then it looks like I'm in another city.
Yeah. And the elements are what.
That's my fear.
That we've looked at with the staff is the building scaling, the materials, again, looking at those condos with with the the brick, the facades and the three-story, and how they're brought up to the road, just like the the mixed use is brought up to the road. So that that streetscape. So, yeah, that's something that we've we've talked about with the city is, yeah, I mean, how's it gonna transition from this to that? And what elements are gonna tie those together while at the same time not having this this wall?
So you use the Texas Project a lot. Do you, do they, I would assume, eventually transition to residential, right? Do you have any pictures of how they transitioned? Or is that some of the concern? I'm just trying to say that I think that's the issue here, right? Is it's a continuation where it goes, if you went around the whole U road, it's this, different, 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 this. And that's, I think, the discussion is what, what, how do you flow it back so that if you are driving from this side to the other side?
And again, I don't think it needs to be the same. It just needs to have a good flow as it goes around. It doesn't look like.
Be residential.
Oh, well, we just drove into another city now.
Right.
Yep.
All right.
So are we?
I don't know. What are your thoughts on how to make that work?
You're talking about the residential piece.
Yeah, so it has the same feel.
So I would say.
It hasn't brought up yet. I don't know.
Yeah, let's go ahead and.
Maybe we should discuss the residential a little bit and pop back and forth.
Discuss that, and then we'll pop back.
Yep. Thank you.
I guess at this point, we'll go back to item 2.3, and we'll ask the applicant to come up to discuss in further detail.
2.4.
Oh, 2.4, sorry. In further.
Back to 2.4.
Yeah, 2.5 to back to 2.4 to discuss in further detail the the residential portion of the town center. If you want, just state your name.
I will, yeah. My name is Steve Maddox, Edge Homes. This is a rather intimidating task that's before us tonight. We have spent hundreds of hours and thousands of consultants, and we've chatted, we've talked, and it's almost like we want to come up with this super pill with everybody's opinions. And it has been mind-boggling. I have done projects that are significantly larger in terms of unit counts, that have been easier because it's cohesive. And there are a lot of opinions. And then when I took the time to do what Mike challenges to do, which is to go look at the design guidelines, I had the epiphany that Adam just eloquently put, which is, it seems like things have changed a scotch. And so I began to look at this small component in the middle of a big ocean, and it kind of wasn't fitting. It was just this awkward piece that was square and everything else was round. And so we began to look at. And so this was our task as we began to look at this. And Mike continued to remind us of all of the architectural components that needed to be there. And we seem to have conflict with ADA, we seem to have conflict with traditional and contemporary, and we seem to wonder how we tie everything in. And then I I began to rack my brain as to who our ultimate user is. Who are the families that are going to be here? And who are the individuals that that are going to spend the balance of their life here? And who are those that are going to spend the beginning of their life here? I took the opportunity to take a Monday night and ice skate with my family on 50-cent skates. And it was one of the funnest evenings that I had, and longed for that in the community that I live in that doesn't see the value of what time, effort, and resources have been put into this. And I want to be a component of that. I have enjoyed our partnership, both professionally and civilly, and want to continue to be part of the solution, not part of the hindrance. So that's the spirit of which I want to discuss tonight. So Bren, if you'll just begin plowing through this, this is what I began to look at, which is I have cottages that are in the upper left-hand corner. I have single-family. We transition into townhomes that are loading public roads, front-loading public roads. And then we go to single-family homes, and then we go to attached, and then we go back to very high density. And then we have commercial, and then we have the crown jewel right in the middle of this project. And we joke, it's either a U road or a Y road. And then we have the discussion internally as to, if I'm sitting on the balcony of this building and I'm looking, what do I see? And that was a challenge for us to look at and say, how do we blend? And I'm gonna jump into that, even though it's not on a slide. What I would like to do, and what I would propose to do, is incorporate the elements that you've spoken of and transition from commercial to residential, because it seems as if the commercial is going to be a very prominent feature, even though I have more units and more curb strength. I think we have an opportunity to bring in those components. And so rather than me guessing, I think Johnny Cash talked about a link that he built over the course of five years with different parts. I didn't want to present that to you. So I have a canvas saying, we can add to corners, we can add to can, to canopies, we can add to elements. Our setbacks are in line. One of the items that was brought up, I believe, by Mr. Palace, how are we going to connect the residential that exists to the town center? So the slide that's in front of you is what we are proposing for all pedestrian access. And what I want to put over the entire project is a pedestrian easement that will be in perpetuity, that will be maintained by the HOA of this individual community, so that we don't have conflicts with residents that are currently cutting through and have wielded their way through the weeds, and be able to connect the communities in a lot of different ways. I was reminiscing as to when I was a child, I would go to the path of least resistance through any. And I think we've adopted that and and looked at this and thought, there's really no more than about 150 to 300 feet where somebody can jump on a pedestrian byway and navigate their way to the town center. And then as we began to look at, how do we push pedestrians across and into the town center? We talked about a speed hump that we would like to redo in here, with Brett's permission, on connecting something as a traffic slowing mechanism of about an eight-foot plenum that would just rise, not just a, not just a speed bump, but something that would really rattle your dentures if you hit it too hard. And that's really what we wanted to look at, is how do we move people to and through and not have it become a burden of the city and sell to our residents the fact that there is going to be community involvement through a private community? Bren? I want to just highlight areas that I felt were super important with our consultant as we drive into the community here. One of the original guidelines is that all the buildings are pushed to the corner. There are some legalities, and Adam could probably address this with line of sight, where we can't push our buildings to the corner because it's, you you can't see around the corner. So we began to look at pushing buildings back and to create a friendly environment for the community, but also an opening to the community. Rather than closing it in, we wanted to open up everything that has been built and that exists right there, and then create a seating vestibule there for individuals that maybe are seeking relief from a crazy festival that's going on all Saturday, and a place of sanctuary and refuge, not only emotionally, but there will be seats there and a place off of the beaten path, but still in shouting distance of what events are going on at the park and or the splash pad. This is just an aerial view of what we plan on doing there. We want to tie in the trellises, the park benches that exist here. Mike indicated the the lighting, and and also the trash reciprocal. So we want to pull what is already existing a little bit further into our community, and then tie that in in a visual visually pleasing way. Then as we get into the community, we had some what I refer to as trailheads, which are going to be where the community connect to and from. And we've scattered that throughout the project to invite people into the community and to the community and through the community. And we've placed those at strategic places that allow traffic to come, when I say traffic, pedestrian traffic, to and through within these areas that will all be maintained by the HOA. One of the items that my children have helped me discover is hammocking. And I went to a hammock park at daybreak, which I was embarrassed to go to because I don't partake of herb. And I thought that's what it was going to be. And I got there, and it was actually a family gathering. And they had stacked hammocks, and there was a family of five, and it was just people swinging. And I thought, this is fantastic, and I would like to incorporate that. And I'm going to incorporate that. I haven't had the opportunity. So I have created two of these areas that will have kites over the top of them. You had mentioned shade and relief from that. This will be a summer activity, not a hot-chocolate winter activity, but something that is unique to this particular area. And we will have those both on, both on the east and the west side. One of the privileges that I have in life at this point is the opportunity to babysit my grandchildren. And you guys are all a lot younger than I am. Sand seems to be a great attractant. Thank you. Sand seems to be a great attractant. I have never done an adult sandbox. This will be a 30 by 40 sandbox that will have power equipment, meaning manually-powered equipment, backhoe equipment, and a place that I can go sit on a bench and let kids be kids, away from the beaten path. It's not a swimming pool. I can read my book, I can nap. And something that will allow our individuals that will be living in here that are not the millennial generation that needs technology. So both of these are non-technology-driven amenities that will be incorporated into the walkability from side to side. Bren, thank you. We're actually embarrassed to present our tot lot. Years ago, Adam said, I want to see the product number, size, and false. That's included in the bottom right-hand.
Hey, you remember that?
Things don't go away when you're humiliated from this point. I didn't have those. I do tonight. Everything that we do is going to fail in comparison to what the city has provided. It is, it is a microcosm of what is across the street. So our amenities are really driven towards things that are not provided by the city. And we are going to include several of these tot lots. Our our belief is going to be that these will sit static, other than the half-hour blitz that a parent may or may not have to come out and enjoy and just add to the aesthetics. Our, let me just address our open space. That was brought up in the work session. We are to 31, 32% open space, which is higher than city standard. It's also an opportunity for us to separate buildings. It's an opportunity for us to create these garden areas and walkability through the community. Our thought is this is an extension of what has been created with a land use. Everything is going to be private. The parking that was talked about earlier, I have every intention of restricting with the city's blessing, everything that has already been provided by the city. And if we can do that on a time, if it's 10 o'clock, 10:30 PM, that those spots are vacated, we will have cross-agrees agreements with the mixed use. And then we have provided garaged units on everything that we are doing, and driveways on everything that we are doing. And we do have public road on on the exterior of the Y road. This is the product that we had talked to you about maybe nine months ago or a year ago, which is our alley-load product. We wanted to scatter product around. One of the items that we are trying to achieve is to not just collect all product type in one area, but spread it through a community for demographic and creating more of a neighborhood sense, rather than just, this is where this product is in this one. So the next one is more of a traditional townhome, more in harmony with what is across the street. The units that you see there highlighted, this will be a front-load traditional product. And the next one, Bren, will be, this is a Rambler Town Home, which is a fairly large unit. It's about 1,800 square feet, not including the basement. These are the only units that will back onto a public road, more in line with the single-family that's across the street. I think this is the item that's probably going to require a lot of brainpower for us to do exactly what you had asked, which is, what are we going to do? These are ADA-compliant units, the way that we sit them today. The brownstone, the traditional stairs, some of the things that you see that are built in larger cities, aesthetically maybe pleasing, but are very limited as to who can live in them. This is an attempt with staff to be able to incorporate a lot of what we have seen and what we have been presented. We have gone through exhaustively the design guidelines. There's probably as much conflict as there is cohesion. There's probably as many pictures that contradict each other. And then the the question, and I appreciated it coming up, which is, how do we blend? How do we look at this? And so we have created some artist renderings, Adam, because I don't have pictures of what it will look like. it will look like. This is, as you can see by the arrow denoted in the right-hand corner, driving to the town center. This is what our streetscape would look like. We are essentially 15 feet back of walk as designed by the utilities that are already installed. These are the streetlights that are installed. We would enhance this with tree-lined streets to the level that you will allow us to. I have a goal of planting a trillion trees so we have no global warming in the future. So we're going to do it one tree at a time. And then we wanted to have product mix. And again, I'm trying to open up the corners as you drive into this so that the, the beauty that exists, the architecture that exists, the play that exists are completely open. And that's why you see the buildings pulled back from that cornerscape. And I kind of looked at that as just a globe that we will all be able to enjoy. This is just looking at one of those corner vestibules of what that corner will look like once designed. Again, a gathering area and just a little bit of relief from three-story buildings throughout the whole project. And we would hope that we could incorporate. I was made fun of by my peers that if we did some type of a carriage or an entryway that you're now entering the town center, that I would show my age. I still would like to explore that at some point, if we could do something that looked current, something that denoted that we are, we are coming into the community. And I would look for help on that. And so I didn't put that in there because the only one that I could find was in Ogden, and it is not current. And the ones that are in Seattle looked very traditional. And I'm not sure what the look is. We could go with a timber look, and then the Parks Department will yell at me because it's a maintenance headache. But I would like to explore that in this particular area. And then this is the question, and I, I, again, this is just us curving around the Y Road. We have not transitioned, but I am confident that we could have architectural components that would incorporate, whether it's canopies, whether it's, it's elements that we carry from residential to commercial, that would allow there to be some cohesion, whether that's brick, whether that's cornices, whether that's trellises, whether that's any of that. We can blend the two of those together so that it's going to be apparent that you're transitioning, but not apparent that you're, I think it was mentioned that you're in a different city or a different neighborhood. So if you look on the left-hand side of the screen, that's the timber element that I think would be really fun to incorporate at a level here in this particular area. This is just a shot looking at it, not wanting to have identical architecture, but not wanting to break it up to the point where we had lots of different brick colors. So we have taken an attempt at three different palettes to mix them in. Three-story buildings are large, and we just felt like a little bit of relief between them would be extraordinarily beneficial. This is our private alleyways, which have the driveways that will be essentially four stalls per unit, including the garage space and the driveway.
What's the length of the driveways?
I believe we, on, on these particular ones, are between 18 and 20 feet.
I, I just ask because there's a couple of communities where, where it's definitely 18 feet or less, and the trucks are two, two to four feet out into the middle of the road.
Brett told me he's had two knee transplants hitting hitches, and I suggested that we go in for eye surgery if he's hitting hitches, but I understand the problem. We have green space to push, push these at whatever level we want to do.
So, so what's the garage length as well?
21 feet on that, so.
Where do the garbage cans go though, Steve?
Everything that we do is private garage or private trash pickup, and we do not have community. And so everything will be restricted through the HOA of maintaining those.
I'm just thinking, and there's, and it's not, it's not going to be everyone, but I'm just thinking a 21-foot and then 18 to 20-foot driveway, my truck won't go on either of them. And so.
We, and I drive a 350, and I would hang. We, we love hardscape, but we hate hardscape because it's really hard to hide ugly. And so a lot, as you can see, of the walkability, we wanted to push behind the units rather than sidewalks on the streets. Because of the layout of this, we have that flexibility. If that's something that you're passionate about.
I'm just curious if there, if there may have to be some sort of parallel parking-type function in some places or something. I, I just know there's a couple of communities that you drive through, and they're hanging out everywhere.
Yeah.
It's, it's not a very enjoyable or safe drive. And so I'm just trying to think, what is a way to accommodate them? I don't have the answer for you. I'm not here for that one.
Let us explore. We have the real estate is what I'm saying. It's whether we believe that the value of a longer drive and less grass is more important than you and I hanging our bumpers out.
Or additional place for that specific need, maybe.
Yeah.
And I, again, I don't have the answer. It's just, it, it does seem to be a problem in a, a number of communities that are designed like this now.
Yeah. Okay.
I was just looking, so like, if someone has a party, is there additional parking close to any of the units where additional cars could park?
So in, in your cross-section, we are allowed to park on one side of the road or the other, and we would, we would sign that, badge that, and you do have spacing between buildings. A lot of the parking for this is going to be community parking and temporary parking. They will be citizens of Harrigan, there will be those that will park in city parking, there will be those that park on city roads, there will be those that park in different areas. We exceed the parking requirement, the strict requirement, by about 100 stalls. The first project that I did in here, I was yelled at for having too many parking stalls because this is going to be a walkable community. So I'm asking for permission to exceed the parking requirement, which is an oddity for me.
It will be used.
Yes, I concur.
Yeah, well, I've seen, I've seen the park have events where it's hard to find a, a parking spot right now.
Yeah.
And so.
Yeah. And then this is just standing in front of the buildings that exist right now, looking down and what that corner section would be and what our buildings would look like. Again, Adam, not live, but artist renderings of what we are anticipating. So that is about the extent of what we would like to present and ask for feedback, understanding that this isn't something that we drew last night, something that we've kicked around for a lengthy period of time, and the community just feels with the 30% that this is going to be an extraordinarily livable community. Now we want to just make sure that the harmony that you guys have been discussing exists.
So, so for me, and I'll, I'll, I'll just share what my feelings are. I think you hit a lot of it. I actually am pretty comfortable with most, I will say, everything but right around the U. This is what I'm going to say. To be straight up, all your open flow and things, to me, hits the mark. I just feel like we need to get that up around the U as well. So I think the, the way, if you go to the, like, your, your sides right here, how the, the stone stops, and you have this big white wall, that is concerning to me. I think if we could tie that in and blend that a little bit better, it, it.
Wrap it around.
Wrap it around or enhance that area. That, that's where I see some, some areas. I agree with you that I like the elements that the city has used with the wood. I think somehow, and again, I'm not an architect, we need to incorporate that.
I have to wait to talk until Adam.
Into the buildings somehow, both the mixed use as well as these. Because it is such a substantial element of the park, that I think if we could tie that in to those elements somehow, I think it would enhance. I think your corner looks great except for the big white wall, to be honest.
So we, we are open.
My opinion.
No, we are open, and I think this meeting is going to be the best meeting that I've had in three years, because whatever we talk about here.
We haven't been that bad the last three years. We've been okay the last three years.
Needs to transition into the commercial, but not in the real sense. So we have known that this corner, Ken Harris is the architect that has been consulting with us on this. The fear is too heavy, the fear is too much brick, and this is an attempt to break it up. And then also, I had them remove the tree elements because I don't want you to think that I'm hiding it behind an elm tree. This is how it will look day one, but if you look at the landscaping that will actually exist on that corner, yeah. You're an architect?
Mm-hmm.
So I think we have some experts we would look for, some things other than a swag.
I do have one other question, is how do these buildings get parked? Where do these people park?
These, these have garaged units, and I will send in the architecture, but we have, everything is alley-fed, everybody has an individual garage and a driveway.
They tuck under from behind?
18 to 20 feet. Say that again?
They're tucked under from behind?
So we took essentially a 12-plex and took out one row. We took out two units and turned that into garage units.
On the backside, okay.
Yes, on the backside. So everything is alley-loaded.
So how many units is in one?
This is a 10-plex.
So it's 10, 10 units with 10 garages?
Correct.
Okay.
And 10 driveways.
Okay. That was my question.
Say that again?
10 two-car garages?
10 one-car garages. Yes, thank you.
It's my turn.
I'm good.
All right. I think from the black and white to the renderings, I can, there's some elements here that I think are, are starting to go well. And I think if we do some more of them, I think it will actually help. So this is a case where more is more.
I have my pen.
But I think the first one is more doors onto the sidewalk. The best is if those can connect onto the sidewalk, but if it's a door onto a little patio in front of the building.
Okay.
You know, with maybe a little railing around it, then that starts to engage the sidewalk and just bring life to the sidewalk, and really bring that activity all the way around the horseshoe. The one piece that I think is a detriment and, and makes it, is the breezeway. The breezeway makes it look like a three-story walk-up, which says, you know, it could be anywhere, cheap apartment. But if you, if you were to just put a door on that, then it starts to engage it more and not look like that, that breezeway.
And now it's just a continuum of what we have.
Right, it's a continuum of those doors.
Okay.
So you start to get that engagement with the sidewalk as opposed to just, oh, there's a, this is cheap apartments, look at that breezeway. As soon as you put a breezeway in there, it looks like cheap apartments. And so if there's a way to camouflage the breezeway, or, you know, finds, you know, maybe you just enter.
I don't think doors would be inappropriate. It would keep the weather out as well.
Well, and it would keep people from flowing front to back during large activities and, you know, other things. So if there's a way to make it look more like traditional apartments without the breezeway, then I think you're better off. And so I think it's really the breezeway is one of the pieces that just makes it feel, you know, a three-story walk-up as opposed to something better.
Right.
So I think really a lot of those pieces make a big difference. I am going to come to the corners, though, and I think if you could connect the, the two buildings at the corner, that would make all the difference in the world. This, and the whole, it would just, it would just create that gateway that you're kind of talking about with, with the arch. You wouldn't need the arch because the buildings form that gateway. Through the form and mass of the buildings, it's tied together as you fill in those corners.
Okay.
It would just take it, take it to that extra level that the, the town center needs.
What about breaking up the, like, materials, elements of each building? Kind of like, what do you think?
I don't think the, the materials, the, when you have the nice, or the traditional brick, it does, it does well there. I think that is, it doesn't feel out of place. For example, one place that actually has a lot of brick, but everybody loves, is Jackson Square, New Orleans. Now, I'm not saying we do a New Orleans style, but if you go to Jackson Square in New Orleans, the entire building is brown. But it's the most expensive housing in the entire city. But it has another element that could be added to these as well, is balconies. More balconies, I think it actually helps it, because all the activity is facing onto the square.
It's facing, they go out and they see the music in the park, and they enjoy that, and that's a different feel. There's another thought that I have with this, and I agree with Jackson in regards to more doors, because my thought immediately when, when he started talking about more doors, went to San Francisco and Philadelphia, one that did it right and one that struggled with it. Because the Roanoke theme got very dilapidated. But San Francisco has, where there's a recess on one, and then there's one that goes out that has a covered, it, it's got a feel that when you walk those streets, that's very unique. And I think if you have recess with, with covered area where the door's in, and it's a little weather area, take my jacket off out there, I walk in, shake off the water, whatever you want to say. And then I have the next one that has a little bit of a, not exactly an awning, but a hard structure there. I think that'll also blend better into the commercial, the mixed use. But I think it gives a feel that's very unique.
Okay.
And I think it's more of a blend in that circle with how I think of it. But I do like the idea of more doors and balconies as well, because I think that, that sort of shows, hey, everybody who's living here is still looking to the center of what this is, because that's where the activity is, that's where the excitement is. I walk out on my balcony, I sit down, I enjoy the music, I look to see what's going on in the park, oh, I want to go out and take my dog out, whatever it is.
People watch.
People watching.
People watching, yep.
Make sure we get good citizens here then.
All right.
So that's some of my thoughts. Any other?
Feedback on the site plan, the amenities, the sandbox, you're all welcome to come and play in.
I was impressed with, I enjoyed, I enjoyed the elements that you, you guys had here. And, and I'm actually perfectly okay with the difference in the housing style.
Okay.
Behind the, the front circle.
Okay.
I really think that circle going all the way, way around with the mixed use has to have a flow that, that really is just providing, I like the red brick. It makes me think of NC State, if you've ever been there. It's all brick, 100% the whole college. It's very cool. They have a lot of walkways and other things that are really neat to look at. It might be something to look up later.
Name of it?
NC State.
Okay.
They're 100% brick. It's really cool college. But, but it's just, I, I do like the feel of it, and I like the red brick.
Brick will age well. You guys have incorporated a ton of brick in town center, and we just wanted to carry the theme.
Yeah, and the red and Kinnicott, I think, I think it's sort of what some people envisioned.
Okay. Okay. This is a long two hours. Thank you for staying engaged.
What I would say, one thing that is definitely an improvement over the one we saw nine months ago is you've got a lot less garage doors facing out onto the public streets, but you've also got entry doors. But you've got entry doors also facing when you do that. And so that is, that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you can figure out a solution for those poor truck drivers like myself and yourself.
Okay.
If not, they're hanging two feet out in the middle of the road everywhere.
Yeah.
So, and for some reason, we like our trucks around here.
Yeah. One of the big items, my takeaway from the last time we met, was just connectivity to the community. Are we good with that connectivity?
The, the only thing, and I, I was thinking of the mixed use with the commercial as it passes through. I think the connectivity here is fine with a lot of the residential, but the mixed use as it passes through here, I think that area can be very, very cool in what, what you guys can establish here. Maybe that's a brick walkway that goes all the way across. Maybe, maybe it's a sitting area, maybe it's where you park your bikes, I don't know. I, I think it can become a very cool area right there. Maybe it's a sitting area that has a outdoor fireplace that people sit down, and it's covered a little bit. I mean, I, I think those areas on both sides can really tie in.
Specific where you're talking about on?
In between the two mixed use.
Okay.
Yeah, the pathway.
You got that?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I mean, I mean, that's where, that's where all the residential behind it are going to be walking through.
I like the fire setting.
Yeah, so I think, I think you can make it be very, very cool with what that can be.
Okay.
And I mean, that's also going to be a addition to all of the commercial, where people can say, I'm going outside and I'm going to sit there because it's something different. I think it can be something, I mean, we do have all the apartments on the east side that I'd love to see a way to tie everybody through and make it a little bit easier. We have a lot of apartments over there, and so a flow that comes all the way across as well, just to think of maybe even some sort of path that goes.
The mixed use.
Yeah, because, I mean, granted, there's, there's a, there's a lot of people there, and I would much rather have them walk than drive over.
Totally.
So, and so we have to provide that. If not, our parking's done when there's an event, just with the neighbors.
Okay. Thank you.
I did have one last little comment, just as a quick note, on the doors coming, you know, when I say add more doors, let's make sure they're not sliders. It's their hinge doors, traditional doors, not, you know, and a glass door would, would be awful. So, or, sorry, a glass sliding door.
Not a patio door.
Right, no patio doors. Have them be hinge doors, so it has that traditional look to it that, you know, is either the traditional or the conventional.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Yeah, thanks.
And so, um, I think at this point, we're looking to continue this, but we do need to make a motion on 2.4 and turn to the commission for that.
I move to continue item 2.4 without date.
Thank you, Adam.
I'll second that.
Uh, second by Brody. And we'll start with Lauren.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Brody.
Yes.
Andrea.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
And Andy.
Yes.
And then we'll move on to item 2.5, um, for a motion on that one.
I'll go ahead and make a motion, uh, continue item 2.5 without date.
Thank you, Andy.
Second.
And a second by Lauren. We'll call for a vote on that. Lauren?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Brody?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
And Andy?
Yes.
Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you.
And now we will turn to our dear friends.
Let me just say about that one, I will, I can send you guys those PowerPoints. Feel free to email us more comments or whatever because we're obviously going to be working on this the next few weeks.
We'll see if we can't get a couple examples. If we can get pictures or other images to maybe give a, a little better idea, that'll help out with this. Um, but let's, uh, turn to item 2.6 and turn to the staff for this first, which is a site plan approval for Game Point Indoor Outdoor Recreational Center, which we're very excited about.
Okay, great. So we obviously talked a little bit about this last night in the joint meeting, and this will be a good refresher. Uh, this shows our vicinity map where we're looking. This is going to be tucked right over near, um, Miller Crossing as well as the auto mall area. Um, and then moving forward, we're going to be looking at this proposed site plan. Um, just as a reminder, we are kind of only working on lot two of this, which if you recall the preliminary plat, um, I don't know if it was in here. I think it was. Um, it's going to be this larger building, um, over here. I think the plat kind of splits like this. So we're going to be mostly focusing on this part here. This shows, and I'll let the applicant speak more to this, but kind of their latest iteration that incorporated this patio and reception area, um, kind of rearranged some of the parking, um, which was discussed last night as well. Um, this, we can kind of toggle back and forth if you guys have specific questions. Um, then coming into these elevations, this latest iteration shows, um, a multi, a two-story part here for that, um, ropes course that Aaron was describing to us. Um, so that's kind of been the change in that. Um, this tabulation shows some of those, um, materials used. And again, I can toggle through these if there's specific views you want to see. Um, but that's kind of the, the visuals we have for that. Let me know if you want to see anything up close.
Thank you. Um, at, at this time, um, can we ask the applicant to come up? Please just state your name and then if you want to go into further detail, we'll, we'll probably have some questions afterwards.
Absolutely. Uh, Aaron Osman representing Game Point Attractions. Uh, myself and my partners on behalf of this project. Um, also in partnership, obviously very closely with the city. We've been working on this for some time in partnership with the Economic Development Team. And really, I think the best thing to do is open it up for questions based on the fact that we spent so much time talking about it last night that I think you've probably formulated some of your thoughts and we can go into some of those details now.
I, I think we can definitely do that. If you don't mind just a 20,000-foot overview because it is public record.
Thank you.
And so I want to make sure that, that those that may be listening are aware of what we are talking about.
So the purpose of this project is to bring to Harriman a family entertainment center. The concept is a 46,000 square foot facility that will contain a 24-lane bowling facility. Uh, it will include a four-story, uh, multi-element ropes course, um, laser tag arena, multi-level laser tag arena, uh, several escape rooms, um, and a large central area for redemption arcade and other activities, uh, gaming-like activities for individuals to enjoy, and a full-service restaurant inside the facility that will be a sit-down menu-based restaurant and pizza bar area for people to enjoy a broad menu similar to like, um, a Red Robin-type menu in the restaurant area. Outside will be a reception area, an extension of the restaurant, a reception area for activities, events, and corporate type of parties. Uh, there will also be a splash pad area for kids and moms with covered seating and things like that for them to enjoy while they're there in the, in the good weather months, um, as well as kind of a garden area. And then to the north of that will be a, an 18-hole miniature golf course that will be tied to the facility as well. So that's the general overview. The, the structure of the building will be multiple different levels. You'll have a single level for the, you can see there in this middle section to the left. Um, you can see it's a single level for the bowling alley. Then it gets a little bit higher where you have the multi-level, um, ropes course area and escape rooms. And then the third area is actually almost, it's three and a half, almost four stories. I mean, it's, it's, it's over 50 feet high to accommodate that, that ropes course structure. And it, the goal there is that it's fully englased and, and, you know, encased in glass so that you can see in and out both during the day and the night. The ropes course will be a glow-in-the-dark type structure that will be very visible in the evening. We'll have lighting that really attracts to that, uh, to draw people into this very iconic building that we're trying to, to, to build there. So that's a good overview from my perspective, Chris, and then we can go from there to questions.
Thank you so much. Um, and then we'll turn to the planning commission for maybe some questions to start off with this. And then, um, I, I think there will probably be certain slides that we do go to, to talk about in greater detail. Um, I think a good point maybe to start with might just be the parking in general.
Do you want to go to the site plan?
If we could, that'd be great.
Okay.
And then I'll let the planning commission, we addressed this a little bit in, in our work meeting, but maybe we can talk and ask some of the questions or thoughts that we had on that.
Well, I know you're not going to be doing a parking study per se on this. You're coming to an agreement on what parking needs will be, but it sounds like you, we talked a little bit about occupancy, you know, the demand there. We think there's probably plenty of parking.
Did you get occupancy number?
Yeah, was there an occupancy?
We don't have that yet, no.
Okay.
But we're working on that.
Because some of the concerns I think we brought up in the meeting was, you know, right behind the proposed building, the parking right there.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think there's a security issue with parking there. Maybe we can get rid of the parking right there behind the building.
Yep.
Move that building a little bit, maybe you get a little bit more in front. Uh, provide the parking next to the patio area. I think that's a good location for it. That'll help a couple of things, help keep cut through traffic from coming through. Um, but that other parking around, uh, the patio area, like I mentioned, is more open. I think it's more visible for people. You know, I, I, I'm just concerned about the parking right behind the building.
And we concur with that, Andy. We, we had, have had our own conversations about it. Our goal was to maximize parking as much as we could, but we, we agree with you on this back portion after the comments last night that we just think that's going to create a thorough, fair-type feeling. We have some security issues. And I don't know that we need that much parking. Um, we want to agree with the city on the parking amount as much as that we, as we can without spending the money for a parking study because we really think it's going to tell us what we already know. But we're willing to look at those options with you.
Yeah, you get your occupancy number. You're going to know.
We'll know, pretty good idea.
We'll know.
So that's my comment.
Good feedback.
Just to clarify, a parking study is required by ordinance. It's just that it doesn't say who has to do the parking study. It does indicate that it needs to come from a credible source. And essentially, our engineering staff is partnering with your staff or your engineers. And we're together developing.
No, but there is a study.
Yeah.
We know there's an evaluation.
Incredible combination. Yeah, it's required by code, so we'll, we'll produce that. And I, and I think we were hoping to even have some indicators tonight, but we didn't quite get done.
Kind of what I was mentioning in the joint meeting, it probably won't be coming to you in the form of, like, what you saw for the charter school, that really thick document. It'll be more like something that, working with Josh and Blake and, and Bryce, our engineers.
Be a memo from engineering.
Yeah, we'll be able to look at, um, occupancy and probably similar uses to ascertain those numbers, but.
We counted the parking spots today at the Boondocks in Kaysville.
Nicely done.
And how many did they have?
We pulled up Google.
How many did they have?
We actually went to Boondocks. It was like 280 or something.
Okay.
And they're about a 50,000 square foot building, so it was very comparable, you know, it was kind of a similar idea, so.
Yeah.
It sounds like you guys are on the right track with the number of parking stalls, just maybe the location of them.
Yeah.
Lunchtime on the 30th.
Okay, good. Um, another item that we did touch on a little bit is the golf course, miniature golf. Um, one of the thoughts that we would like to maybe understand in greater detail is the landscaping around it and if there are other pergolas, other functions that you're planning on doing. Because we have noticed, um, or one of our thoughts where, um, a lot of times in hot weather, nobody wants to go there because there's no shade.
Yeah.
Because typically how they're built, there is limited shade.
Right. Well, that is something actually that my, on a personal level, my wife and I are very concerned about as well. We want there to be, um, an environment where, where moms especially can come and sit down and watch their kids play in a shaded area of some kind. So we're going to try to work that into our design. We are not that far along.
Okay.
Uh, but we do recognize that need. We haven't even selected the vendor yet that's going to help us build that particular course.
That's funny. And one of the thoughts that we did have is if it, it's primarily, um, the thought is the landscape for shade, is you're talking about 10 or 15 years on a lot of the trees, unless you get more mature trees, and that needs to be considered in this plan.
Yeah, makes sense.
I think the other element we talked about is the future building, um, just the size of it, how many tenants? If we have one tenant or multiple tenants, just again, taking into consideration the parking that's required for that piece, so.
That future site, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, there's enough space there that we think we could comfortably house three different tenants. Um, but we'll likely have two. Uh, we don't really know though. We haven't put a lot of thought to that. The only thing that we have decided is to have the drive-through capability for at least one of the tenants there. But yeah, we're, we're clear that we're going to have to be careful about that going forward.
I think another element that I talked about yesterday is, is, um, just putting some kind of sidewalk from the back of the parking lot up to the front.
I captured that note last night.
Yeah. Even like Walmart, you know, they have kind of like the collector for pedestrians.
Yep.
So it makes it safe to walk to the building. I have four kids, so I'm always trying to like corral them.
Watch out for that.
Is, is the plan to have it be like one main entrance? Or is it going to be, you go to the bowling alley and you can connect? I haven't figured out where your entrance is.
If you see this part right here, kind of to the middle and the north side, it's kind of a jut out there.
Yeah.
That's our main entrance. Can you go to the elevations, guys, and, and show the main elevation of the, the, the high glass area? And it's this one.
That, that is the main entrance?
That's the main entrance.
Because I saw the glass over on the side.
Yeah, that's the restaurant. So there's a separate entrance if you go around to look at the side entrance from the restaurant. You can see there's a separate entrance there for the, the restaurant piece.
I see that.
And then there's another entrance to the right of the main entrance that is kind of like, um, more of a, it was meant to be more of an emergency access, access point that we're trying to make look nice, but that's the intent there. But we can, you know, if there's concern about access, we can work through that. But really, we want to funnel the, the customers through that registration area, know who's in the building, get their tickets, and then, yeah, plenty of, you know, access to get out of the building in case of an emergency.
But if you're going to the restaurant, excuse me, you don't have to go through the main entrance. You can come inside.
You don't have to.
Which again, would help with the parking on that one end. If you're just coming from the restaurant, you could just pop right in from that parking.
And I do have two or three thoughts on, so the back of the structure, for instance.
Yeah.
As, as we look at this, this is not going to be a parking area. It's not going to be something we look at. Um, obviously, the only thought that comes to my mind is on the far side of the lot, maybe putting larger trees to give it some coverage and block it. And, I mean, I know we talked about the murals and stuff. I'm not really seeing that as something that's necessary.
Okay.
You may need a little more on the right side of this picture because that is where the actual restaurant is and people will be parking up in this area. Um, I would much rather have you take and provide more of a unique, um, I guess, view or, or, uh, murals design to the front of it. Because, uh, I, I mean, I sat here yesterday and I'm looking at it. You have a very cool facility.
Yeah.
And it says Game Point.
Yeah.
And I was thinking about that and I was like, okay, I understand the branding and everything else, but if I go in Cabela's, I got a 20-foot statue that's standing next to me. When I go in there and honestly, it scares my five-year-old, but you never forget it. And so, so, I mean, or shields or things like that.
Or shields, yeah.
And, and I mean, my, my mind went to some metals, unique artwork that's on the front, that stands out, that... Because those things stick in people's minds and, and, and I, I understand the murals on the back probably would have had some effect like that as well, but I don't think anybody will see them that often. And so, so that is where some of my thoughts went to. I actually think the element 24 is simple. It's, it, it looks professional. It's really cool looking. And, and I like the metal look that it sounds like you're, you're going to go with. But, but my, my, my mind went to, I see this cool, awesome place, and then it's Game Point. And there's nothing that makes me, other than, okay, if I can remember the name, I'm good.
Right.
But there's nothing else there.
Well, let me just clarify then. Are you looking for like, from a, a materials perspective, something that would draw or create that memory other than the branding of the, of the, of the company itself?
I think that may be something that'll add a lot to the outside of this. Because, I mean, I don't know, maybe it's some metal structure of a guy on a zip line that, that is attached to the front. I don't, I don't know. I'm not an, I'm not an artist. I, I, but I, I know the places I go where I immediately remember stuff because it's like, oh yeah, there's a huge statue out front at, at some of these places or, or it's, it's just, that's where my mind went because this is a very unique.
Very unique building.
And, and I want to make sure that's, that's, that's sort of shown to everyone else as well when they come in and when they see it and when stuff happens.
Yeah, the, the, I just want to respond to that, just for a comment, quick comment, that the intent behind the glass structure and the ropes course was to be that icon.
Oh, I, I think it definitely helped that.
And maybe Game Point is detracting from that.
Maybe it's too big.
Maybe it's too big. The sign's too big.
Maybe that is it.
Maybe we need to just adjust that and keep that focus on this big, big structure that we're building that really is going to be lit up and very, very obvious in the community.
And maybe we open up the windows a little farther.
Even more.
Maybe, yeah, yeah. Yeah, maybe that is it.
I, I had said in the comment before that the restaurant is our first sit-down restaurant. And the title is smaller than the Game Point, but your windows would be, I can see that'd be your draw, but your signs right now are substantially large.
That's really good feedback. Thank you. We'll definitely take that into consideration.
Is there even more opportunity for additional windows? You got all the windows over on the ropes course, but there's nothing as you go.
There's, well, that's the bowling, which makes it difficult.
Yeah, bowling, I guess, is on the far.
The bowling is to the far, is to the far west. But then you've got the laser tag arena, which is also fully enclosed. And then you've got the escape rooms on the other side that are fully enclosed.
All right.
We do want to have lighting, you know, in the roof area to create some light, natural light in the facility. But when you go into a gaming facility like that, you want it to be a little bit darker for the video games and other activities that are going on.
Fair enough. So I meant to ask this yesterday and I just forgot. Are you going to have like a little grill, like most typical bowling alley areas? Or do you have to go all the way over to get food and then come all the way back?
No, we're going to have a menu capability. We will have food access from the restaurant over to the bowling alley. So there will be ability to get food there, uh, and order right at your tables.
That's going to be a nice run.
Uh-huh. Yeah. We're trying to figure out that flow, Chris.
Rollerblade, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'll, I'll take my turn here a second.
Yeah.
I think it's really, uh, coming along. Uh, I would think it's time as far as the elevations go to probably edit a little bit. And this, this is where I'll bring up less is more again.
Okay.
Uh, I think there's, uh, with all the different materials going on around the building, there's, it, it's getting a little schizophrenic.
Yeah.
Um, and so I think if you were to maybe, you know, where you've got the hanging plants and the trellises, you know, maybe you pick one or the other.
Okay.
Kind of thing. Or, uh, maybe at the entry, you could emphasize that a little bit more by not doing as much with the, the, the horizontal elements.
Okay.
Uh, maybe it's, maybe it's just a glass break between, you know, the other building and, and the metal panel of the building.
Colors?
There's, the colors aren't, aren't too bad. The, I, I think goes well. Um, there might be, there's a little bit going on between the tilt-up and the masonry.[1637.64] So maybe there's a way to, you know.
Tie it in better.
Tie those in a little bit better.
Okay.
But it's getting there, but I think there's still, it's a little bit schizophrenic still.
Okay. Good feedback.
To me, it'd be cool if you could incorporate the wooden panel look that you have around the windows over on, over on the bowling piece, so it kind of flows back.
Be consistent.
It was like three separate buildings.
I think the metal panel where it's at makes a good accent and it makes that big, that point that you're talking about. And so I would almost take, if you were to take away these, the brown horizontal element between.
Right above the main door.
Right above the main door and go all glass at that point, it would almost make it stand off more.
Yeah. I just more mean trying to pick two or three. I actually kind of like the gray and the green thing. I think it makes it look cool.
And the other one that seems a little out of place.
The bowling alley just seems like it's kind of by itself, is all I'm trying to say.
And the other one that is out of place, the dry stack rock right at the entry to the Game Point, that one kind of comes from nowhere compared to the rest of the building.
Well, that is sort of true.
One of the things that I wanted to ask the planning commission was, you know, because of the way that this ordinance is written, there's not any specific requirements for us above the 40,000 square foot. And we wanted to make sure that we were showing you our intent to not just have a boring building, but, you know, incorporate some very creative elements, but keep cost under control as well. What I'm hearing is that we're on the right track and that we could even simplify and make it look a little bit more iconic by not being so complicated with all the different elements that we put onto the building. Is that a good summary of what you're saying?
I like the side with the restaurant quite a bit. The back, I think, is too much. Especially with really what the intent of what we'd like that to be. It might be, I mean, I don't think you want parking back there. I don't think you want a lot of options of kids going back there, people being back there. And so I think the limit of what it is, it really just needs to be a wall.
Staff almost, is all it should be.
Really just needs to be a wall back there.
Now, on this elevation, you mentioned the murals. And the murals in and of themselves aren't that bad of an idea, but it might be simpler just to do more of the, or to remove the pilasters that you've added here and go back to adding trellises. So it's got some of those similar trellis elements coming around the building.
And the only thing I thought about the murals, yeah, the only thing I thought about the murals is this is the west side that's showing right onto the road. Yeah, that was the only thing I was thinking about those as well, but I agree with the other aspects.
I wish we could showcase to you some of the things that we've seen with facilities like this, though. There's some amazing artistic murals that really tie in the entertainment factor of a building like this that look great to the community as well. And people want to have their pictures next to them. They're so unique. So that's the concept.
Like Topgolf has some great, has some great elements they've got going up. And they're kind of to either side of the entry. So it kind of helps emphasize the entry having those.
You've nailed it. Topgolf is actually the example of what I told Silver Peak I wanted to match. I wanted to be close to that kind of look and feel in both daytime and nighttime structure. Spot on. Great feedback. Anything else from the council?
Aaron, help me understand. I think I'm less concerned about the parking now. If I see this right, along the restaurant side, along like the patio area there, that's not, I pictured that as being enclosed before. That's not enclosed, right?
Go back to the.
Like across there. I mean, that's, go back.
Right there, right there.
There, the brick area.
So across that, yeah, because go back to the one where it shows the elevation of the.
The restaurant?
The restaurant.
You want the single restaurant?
That one. Cause that's, that's the end that goes out to the patio, right? This is, so that's straight across, right? That's, so you would leave and then go to the miniature golf a different, and kind of show a ticket or kind of show your. So I think that's pathway. I guess when I was looking at the parking in the back, I was thinking they'd have to go all the way around the miniature golf.
They'd cut through the brick.
They have access down there in that parking.
I'm not so concerned about that parking in back to me, to be honest. I think it's not, you can park there and walk across and be there.
So for me, what I'm saying is I think where the 20 parking installs is no problem at all. It's the 54 park right there that just seems.
Right behind the four-story.
That's a lot of people that would have to go around the building a long ways. If you're down here, you're walking all the way.
If we bring that building forward or back again, we also create more parking up front. So I mean, I think we're gonna be in a good spot.
Right, yeah. Exactly. The one thing with the side where the restaurant is.
Yeah.
Do you want to see the elevation?
Yeah, that would be great. So on the far left here, the one thing that I know a lot of restaurants have found a lot of success with is actually similar to what you have here, but it actually is used as a wall between the parking. And it curls around, so it's actually almost like that whole corner is a little more secluded. And then as you go out, it would stay open because of the additional patio and everything else. But it makes it a little more private, a little more.
Quiet.
Yeah. And especially if you're planning on having parking still right behind it, that may be something to consider.
That's a great idea. Very creative. I'll make sure that our design team listens to this recording. Good feedback. Okay. I do have Tyler from One West Construction, our developer here. Do you have any questions for the developer or for our engineering team that you'd like to ask directly to them?
I don't think so. Not this time, for me.
I think you've done a great job. We really appreciate the effort that you've put into helping to make Harriman better.
Thank you. We're excited about it. Look forward to partnering with you in the future.
Thank you so much, Aaron.
Thank you. This will make a big splash.
It will. At this point, it looks like we'll be continuing this item, but if I can turn to the planning commission for a motion on it.
Move to continue item 2.6 without date.
Second. Thank you, Adam and Brody. We'll start with Lauren.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Brody.
Yes.
Andrea.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
And Andy.
Yes.
Now we're down to the legislative items. We'll start off with item 3.1, which is on for a public hearing, but it's a text change to replace Salt Lake County with Harriman City in regard to animal services. And we will turn to the staff.
All right. This one is fairly straightforward. The city recently started their own animal services department. And we, the council went through the process of doing all that, but we found some spots in our ordinance that still refer to Salt Lake County. So this is just a clarification to remove the Salt Lake County and change it to Harriman City Animal Services. Nothing else is changing. Just a name change in our ordinance.
All right. Thank you so much. Any questions for staff real quick, planning commission? All right. Thank you. This is on for a public hearing, so I will open up the public hearing at this time. And at this time, I will close the public hearing and turn to the planning commission for a motion.
I make a motion to approve, sorry.
Thank you, Jackson.
Recommend approval, right?
Yeah. I recommend to the, recommendation to the city council to approve. And a second by Andrea. All right. Andy?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Brody?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
And Lauren?
Yes.
Thank you so much. That'll move on to the city council. Item 3.2, which is also on for a public hearing, is approval of the draft Parks, Recreation, Open Space, and Trails master plan. And I will turn to staff or Wendy on this, Wendy on this one. Thank you so much, Wendy.
Yes, of course, as you all.
Sticking around.
Yes, two nights in a row. We're last, two nights in a row. We're almost last. So many of you know that we've been working on updating our parks, trails, open space, recreation, all things fun and exciting master plan for the past year or so. We've had several meetings. Summer started, event season started, so things kind of priority shifted a little bit. But we're ready to get back on it and wrap it up. So Lisa Benson is here from Landmark Design. They are a consultant for this project. They also did the 2015 master plan, so they're very familiar with Harriman and all the things we have going on out here. So I'll turn the time over to her.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity tonight to come and present the draft master plan for you. Is there a way for me to control the slides or you guys are?
I'll just have to do it from over here.
Okay.
Just like motion to me when you're ready and I'll try to keep up.
Okay. Let's just dive right in. Okay, so the draft plan builds upon the other city planning documents and establishes new goals and objectives related to parks and recreation. It also provides policy direction over a 10-year planning horizon and beyond. And then the plan includes specific measurable and prioritized implementation strategies. The plan's divided into six chapters, introduction, then we dive into parks and open space, recreation, community arts and events, trails, and then we get into priorities and costs and wrap up with goals and policies. We've had a robust public involvement process on this project. We've had an amazing steering committee and we had Commissioner Burbert on that. And they've provided great guidance to us throughout this planning process. We've also had a project webpage throughout the project, which is still live. And that's given people a chance to provide public input and go there for, to be able to view the draft plan and information on the project. So we had a statistically valid survey that was conducted by Y2 Analytics. The top priorities of residents that came out of that survey are trails, open space, and existing parks. The number one reason for using a park is its close proximity to home. And 66% of respondents feel that it's extremely very or moderately important to have dedicated dog parks. 44% participated in recreation programs last year. 26% have a membership at the rec center. Two-thirds of residents use trails at least a few times a year. And 73% somewhat or strongly agree that the city provides adequate parks, recreation, open space, and trails. We tested out a new online engagement tool with you guys. You were kind of the guinea pig for us. This product's called Social Pinpoint. And it's an online engagement tool that allows us to bring in mapping layers and then the public can go and drag comment pins to specific areas in the city. They can leave their comment. They can post photos. We had 76 users and 126 comments. You can see a sample of the concerns there. And there's a hotspot up on the top right that shows you the location within the city that the comments were in. And I just want to mention, too, that we received the type of public input through Social Pinpoint that we used to get at our face-to-face meetings. It seems like people are, you know, tending towards that sort of online, at their convenience sort of engagement. We looked at the demographics of your city as a starting point. Their 2018 population is at 51, just over 51,000, and it'll be over 88,000 by 2028. And by 2060, according to the general plan, you're over 115,000. So 124% increase by build-out. Your population is younger than the county, the state, and the nation. You have more children under 18 in households than the county, state, and nation. You are gradually aging, however, and your household size is decreasing as your community ages. Parks at a glance, you have over 200 acres that serve your community total. That includes rec center, everything like that, special use parks, as well as your traditional parks. And this just summarizes the amenities that you have in all of your parks. Your existing parks map, you can see that your existing parks tend to be concentrated in the center of the city and kind of tend to southeast to, southwest to northeast. And there are some gap areas which we'll talk about here. You don't need to read this. That just summarizes all the amenities in your, in each of the parks. Looking at your local parks, you have over 17 acres, neighborhood parks, community parks. There's actually an error on this slide. It totals up to 186.6. And we, this number is the number of parks, the number of park acres that we use in the level of service calculation. This excludes special use parks like the cemetery, the community gardens. And we also don't count land that's owned by school district, other cities, county, things that you don't have control over, also the real field and, you know, those sorts of items. So when we're looking at level of service, this is an analysis of the acreage of your parks per thousand people. So we take your total acreage, divide that by your current population, multiply by 1,000, and that gives us a ratio of, you have 3.6 acres per 1,000 people currently. We also look at distribution analysis throughout the city to make sure that everybody is close to a park, as that was one of the top priorities in the survey. And according to this analysis, there are four gaps in distribution in the city at the moment. You can see them numbered here, kind of in the northwest corner of the city, down in the southwest, and then off to the southeast. Filling those gaps, so developing the 1.8-acre Creek Ridge Park, which I've been informed is complete now. So we have some updates to do to this before final completion because you guys are just developing so rapidly. So, but we also needed to develop a 20-acre community park up in that area that was shown by the number two. Number three is a little harder to fill because there's not any existing land down there to develop a park. So you have to look to other sources, whether that's schools or open space. And in this case, that gap is close to the Harriman Hills open space. So we're just relying on that, those amenities to help fill that need in that area. And then gap four, we're recommending three 10-acre neighborhood parks and a 20-acre community park to fill those existing gaps. And this just, this map shows you what the distribution looks like once you implement all of the proposed parks in the plan. So future level of service, again, most residents agree that you guys are providing a good level of service. And so we just recommend continuing on with that 3.6 acres per 1,000 people in the future. And implications for the future, so you're gonna need 318 acres total. We take out your existing park acres, the parkland to fill those existing gaps, which we talked about. Parkland that needs to be developed by the city is 8.2 acres. And then parkland to be developed, built by developers is 52.8 acres. Those are the ones that are currently planned right now. Meeting future needs, it jumps up to 417 acres, again, pulling out all of those exist, those other elements that we just talked about. The city will need 97.6 acres to meet that LOS by 2060. But we should point out that this doesn't account for distribution needs. This is just LOS. This is just, you know, looking at that park service ratio. So if we take into account distribution, we're recommending on the map here up in the north, the northwest corner by Parks M and their two small neighborhood parks. And then in the lower, the southeast corner, Park Q, which is a large, large park. I think it's about 98, 98.9 acres. We're just recommending those to help fill out and finish meeting those distribution gaps. And part of that is adding that finer layer of neighborhood parks so that people have that smaller park that they can walk to that they don't necessarily have to. They may be served by a large community park, but we don't want people to always have to jump in their car to get to a park. And this just summarizes that when you add in those extra parks that we're recommending for distribution, even though your, the previous slide showed that you need 97, or a couple of slides back, it was 97.6 acres. If you factor in the distribution needs, then you could jump up to 118.9 acres. The plan establishes park standards for each of the park types, local neighborhood, community, and it talks about specific amenities that are required in each of those. And the intention isn't to have each park be developed and designed the same. We want each of your parks to be unique. But what it does do is ensure that a basic minimum standard, so that parks have a basic service level. And then you work with the community to get specific on your theming.
So what were the negatives? I saw like negative four. What does that mean?
Okay, so this table shows, what we do is we look at each of your amenities. And the first, the second column shows, based on population, what your, what areas you're short in. Like large pavilions, you're a little short in restrooms. The third column shows, based on the standards that I was just talking about, which of those amenities you're short on. And so the fourth column on the right summarizes total to meet both of those. How many, how many of each of those amenities you need. So for example, large pavilions, you need four total, just between those two analyses on amenities to bring the community up to standard.
Since you didn't take into account the private parks, if we can just go back like two slides, I just have a simple question I should have asked a minute ago. It's the one with the map. So like where you have C, D, and E, and you have the little green park. To be honest, every one of those are high-density, that's bringing in their own little pocket park. So that was my question I was gonna ask is, they don't, they have a park. It's just not owned by the city.
Yeah, and that's when you don't have room to develop a city, a public city park, or the developer is already providing an amenity like that, then that's what you have to rely upon in that case. This is just indicating that that need is there and.
But is it? Isn't it fulfilled? Because like, I don't know if you heard Edge Homes builder, he actually, he was teasing me because I have required him to say exactly the amenities they're putting in the parks, which is a lot of the stuff that you're putting on the, in a couple of slides where you were at, of all of the amenities, like they do have pavilions, they do have benches, they are a park. And it's, the city doesn't own it, but it is, to me, it's meeting the need of that community and therefore that community's need doesn't need to be amplified again. Does that make sense, what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, no, and we can reexamine those areas in particular.
Because, and I'm gonna be honest, I've lived here 16 years now. The majority of our recent growth has been high-density where they have pocket parks. And so I just want to make sure we're not getting out there in too far when, if an area, I mean, to be honest, around the Edge Homes, right where you have C and D, those parks are nice, substantial parks. Probably bigger than even some of our city parks for a local. They're almost bigger on scale for a local where I don't think you would go to a different park because it's such a nice feature that you have in your backyard. And so that's something I think we do need to kind of look at is the private parks. Some of the older private parks, like Harriman Village, probably not as nice as some of the newer ones that we're requiring. Cause that's, some of the reason why they get the density bonus they're getting is they're having to put more amenities in that, which I'd hate to count the population twice to look at it as a comprehensive plan.
Sure, yeah.
Sorry to disrupt you, but that was something.
Well, I think that goes to a little bit, the baseball, softball fields, multipurpose fields. Those are the larger parks, and that tends to be what we miss out on. And when you, when we talk about three 10-acre parks, it's gonna be hard to provide that very well with that. But I understand why we're doing that. And that's a lack of ability to get the 30 acres we want in one place. And so I think, at least based off what Adam said, I think some of the thoughts need to be around that in what we find, which is difficult.
So on that same check, I guess, what is the plan to fill in these deficits as we grow? Like for the pickleball courts, or is there a plan going forward or?
There isn't a specific proposal in this document. It states, you know, how many amenities you need. And some of that can be examining existing parks and seeing if there's any possibility to upgrade with some of these amenities. Some of it may just have to come in some of the new.
So in all your studying on parks and level of service, I understand it from a transportation level service A versus E. What is a good level of service? What is the best there is in the entire United States that would, is that? That's what I'm trying to say, is what is a good standard?
It's 3.6 that we're getting.
Is 3.6 amazing and that's what the Harriman Phil is? Or is it smaller? That's what I don't understand.
Yeah, it's a very subjective thing. The National Recreation and Parks Association used to have national standards, and they still provide. And they still provide those calculations, like on an average, how many acres per population communities or agencies have. But communities are so unique that it's really hard to standardize like that. You guys have such a unique amenity with the Harriman Hills Open Space. And out west, we have so much access to open space in general that we may not have as great of a need to provide those developed park areas. And even if you look along the Wasatch Front, it can vary greatly depending on the age of your community and also how you calculate it. Because some communities, their numbers like Provo maybe ten or, or twelve. But they're also counting some of their, you know, the land of the canyon or some of those more open space areas.
Well, if we included our open space, it would cut down drastically.
Yeah, exactly. But then something you have to remember is that you need to project into the future what you want your level of service to be. So if you, if you're aiming for a really high level of service that have, has implications for the future.
That's fair.
But it sounds like you want us to keep the three point six. As you're looking forward, you're, right.
And may, may, maybe, I'll talk on this just a little bit. So originally the goal of the city was ten. And then based off of the amount of land that has been set aside that is usable, because I know a lot of the open space we tend to get from developers and things like that, it's not really usable space. And I'm not saying detention ponds, but I'm talking about, you can have Midas Creek out of my development.
You get, you get streams and things, you don't get cold parking lot.
This development, we, we are gonna give you the steep part of the hill. There's been several times with different developments that we have, we have acquired unusable space to some extent, which has limited our ability to, to have as much as we would like. Right now, because in general, the community is happy with a three point six. And I think this is a safe thing to say, we would like to maintain a minimum of three point six. I think if you talk to Wendy, she wants substantially more. And, and I mean, so do I. And, and overall, I think it's a standard that we need to increase, which there are some larger parks that are planned that hopefully will help to some degree. But, but at least as I've been on this committee, it's a double edged sword because a lot of how we set up stuff doesn't require these developers to give us the land that allows us to do what we'd like to with parks.
Agreed, but I actually think our, our park is probably closer to five or six if you included the private parks.
And it may be.
To be honest, and maybe it's closer to achieve ten or seven. Cause we, we have that.
And I would just recommend that you don't worry as much about comparing to other communities or, you know.
I was just trying to understand.
I think it's more so meeting the needs of the community.
Exactly, folk, you know, kind of seeing whether what you're doing is adequate and what the implications are for the future.
But I do believe we're trending lower than we should, so.
And open space, you guys are sitting pretty good. And so additional considerations, we talked about developing a recreation accessibility plan. We had a really good accessibility advocate on our committee and in our public meetings. Just looking at that component with all your existing parks and future parks. Developing a wayfinding, wayfinding and signage master plan so that people know where your existing amenities are, how to get there. Developing an open space facility standards manual so that maybe new parks, like, like you guys were talking about with the town center, if you guys have a standard city bench or something like that, or, or specific play equipment that you guys find is easier to maintain. Those sorts of things can go into that type of a document if desired. And then Steph was also talking about some, maybe some updates to policy just to ensure that developers provide the parks that meet the minimum standards in this plan. So that's what, you know, what you were just talking about, making sure that you get actually usable space. Recreation, your, your needs are met by the Sorensen Rec Center. You have a lot of different programs, great community events, keeping Wendy very busy, and arts. You have a lot of great arts events. And again, just continuing to partner with Salt Lake County to continue to provide recreation. Continue to work with a developer on a potential community center near that community college campus. And then conduct a feasibility study in the future if demand continues to increase about regarding outdoor swimming pools. Trails, you guys have a significant number of existing trails and planned trails are increasing significantly in this plan. Same with bike lanes. Here's the proposed trail network. And the big focus was on utilizing your natural drainages, which are a great amenity, a great asset. Some communities have nothing like that, so you guys are really lucky. Plus the adjacency to your open space and, and the land you've been acquiring there. And the intention was also to create a lot of loop systems so that you guys, you know, people can jump on a trail and do a nice big loop through the city, so. And this, this map just shows a quarter mile buffer from all of the trailheads in the trails. So you can see you're generally fairly well served. This didn't include bike lanes or bike routes, this was just separated trails. The plan establishes trail standards, which, you know, widths, materials, maximum grades, that sort of thing, user groups. It also includes some sections demonstrating those. Trailhead standards, these come out of your Harriman Hills Open Space Plan. So we wanted to connect this plan to that plan, make sure everything is consistent. And the proposed trailheads are also detailed out in, in this document. So build out your trail network by twenty twenty. This again ties into the Harriman Hills Open Space Master Plan, partner with UDOT on your trailheads and your crossings. Again, wayfinding and signage for your trails would be very helpful. And then always continue to evaluate your safety needs and requirements. This is where it all comes down, the dollar amount. The, so the total amount for upgrading your existing parks, amenities, filling gaps, meeting needs by twenty twenty-eight, meeting needs by build out, and then we have a couple of dog parks on here listed. So that's over a hundred million dollars. And some of these items assume developer provision of the acreage. You know, some of the, the parks that are already proposed by developers. So that, that's why there are zeros in the column for those items. And trails, looking at not only the, the separated trails, all your, your primitive trails, your crossings and lighting and safety improvements and trailheads, that comes to over ten million dollars. And adding that up, one hundred and twelve. And that includes, this includes some figures in there for those additional studies and the implementation of the wayfinding and signage master plan. The plan also details out all of these action items over the timeframe. We know what should be looked at immediately and then through twenty twenty-eight and then through build out as well. And the plan ends with goals that kind of summarize all of the, the need, the major needs and the big chapters. Are there any other questions or concerns? We'll definitely take a look at the, the private parks and make sure that we're not, you know, double dinging there. There's no reason to duplicate services, so that's great. And then, you know, we'll, we'll catch up with Wendy because it sounds like there are a lot of changing, you know, a lot of changes. We'll make sure that by the time we have the final plan, it's reflecting, you know, everything that's up to date at that point, so.
There's been a couple of them. Nope, still waiting for the golf course though.
Yes. You can put that on the higher slope part of the hill. We'll see how you can golf there.
The other one I didn't know is, that I heard recently is hockey rinks. That one is, apparently there is only four places from Logan to Provo that you can go play hockey. That's all, so. Most high schools have high hockey teams, so it's just something that I know has been a big problem.
Go on the ribbon.
Curling. They do.
All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bryn, at this time, were, were we looking to continue this or make a motion to the? Okay, I wanna double check, okay. And I'll turn to the planning commission, if we want to, absolutely.
Chris, this is a public hearing.
Oh, public hearing, oh, thank you. Thank you, I will open this up for a public hearing at this time. I guess Brett didn't wanna talk. I, I will close the public hearing at this time and then turn to the planning commission to either more comments or to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of item three point two, three point two, correct? Yeah, three point two to the city council for approval.
Second.
A motion by Andy and a second by Lauren, and we'll start on the side with Lauren.
Yes.
Adam?
No.
Brody?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
And Andy?
Yes.
Thank you so much, that's a split vote, or, or five to one. And we'll be going to the city council. We'll move on to item three point three, which is a request text change to create planned community PC zone public. And there will be a public hearing for this as well. You ready for this one?
No. No, we're gonna have a public hearing, so we're not gonna continue. We talked about this a little bit last night. Basically what we wanna do is create a new zone for larger scale projects that's similar to a PUD that has different, I'll, I'll go through this. You've got a draft, you've got a couple, you have a draft that we did, you have a draft that was the county's ordinance, and then I think the other one was South Jordan, Lehigh, Lehigh, in your packet. So this is something that a lot of other cities are using. That again, basically kind of starts with a, with a high level concept plan, that has a development agreement involved with it. And then goes down to more of a general connectivity, road connections, trails, and then down to the pod specific. Again, the draft that we've given you, this is kind of what, what's involved again, just to show you. The concept is again, the high level, just kind of says, you know, this many acres of commercial, this many acres of, you know, the different uses. There is a development agreement as part of this, and in the draft that we've given you and in all the other kind of example zones, we've seen most of the design is in the development agreement. So it's not, it's not outlined in the zone, it's, it's part of the negotiation of the development. Again, very similar to a PUD where there's that flexibility for them to have design guidelines, setbacks, and, you know, all that kind of stuff that can come with, as part of the development agreement. Then again, we get a road network, open spaces and trails, and then down to the pod specific plan. The uses would be similar to a mixed use zone where everything's kind of allowed. And then when you do the concept plan, you see this area is commercial, this, you know, so you kind of narrow down where the uses go. This is on for a public hearing, this is not on for approval or a decision or anything. We are looking at a couple of different ideas for this zone, and it's been a work in progress. We've seen some other different examples that may be a better idea. And we've talked to some different people who've used the zone, who say there may be some better, some tweaks we should make to it. So really just wanna get some feedback from you on your general ideas. If you like the idea of the zone, have a public hearing, take public comment. And then we'll, we'll keep working on this and bring you back something probably in September.
Are you looking to use a zone like in the general plan at all? Or is it just something that wants to use it later?
It's just a zone that we would have for future use.
I'm just having a hard time to differentiate in my mind between a PUD.
Me too.
And.
It's very similar.
So I don't know how to give you comments because I feel like we've addressed it and maybe I'm just not understanding what the difference would be. But I, I feel like our PUD zone does that. We're learning to. But.
Yeah, this is the work.
So that, that's why I don't know if I have a lot of comments right now. It just feels like regurgitation of the PUD a little bit, but maybe it has something more specific to architecture and feel. I, I don't know, that a PUD might.
Or does it give you more mixed uses than a PUD?
Yeah, maybe it's more of a blend of the commercial.
Kind of allows mixed use.
It almost seems like this would.
So instead of doing like.
Like for the town center?
So like right now, we do a PUD, all of the, it'd be more similar to the town center, exactly. Right now, we do a PUD, if there's commercial, it's zone commercial, and, and the different residential uses are zoned differently. This way it could all be one zone, all the uses are allowed in that area.
How does, how does that protect it from having continuity? I, I guess.
Future.
I guess I'm trying to, I'm trying to sit here and I'm trying to, I'm not grasping onto the zone yet. And I'm trying to understand how and what it's going to provide for the community to provide a good product. Because right now it sounds like, okay, we have this zone that we put in this hundred acres, and you can put whatever you want, where you want. And I know that's not what it is.
It's definitely more part of the development agreement process from what we've read. Every city does it a little different, and that's why it's hard. But it sounds like there, maybe the good side is, there's a lot of flexibility in those development agreements of really tailoring those acres.
So here's an example, in a couple of weeks, John Lindsay talked to you last night about their commercial over by Salt Lake Community College. We have to rezone that property because he's tweaking where the residential is next to the commercial. And that's what we have to do every time that happens in a PUD. Doesn't, but it doesn't line up exactly where we thought it was gonna be. You wouldn't have that issue with the whole zone is all.
So you wouldn't, but that's the question.
But then it wouldn't come back and they could adjust it, is that what you're saying?
So what they have is a concept plan, still outlines where all the.
But that's what I was gonna say though, is if we do that, I know it's a little annoying for little tweaks here and there. I understand that, but from a commercial long term, looking at the total amount of commercial we have, if we say we, we put this zone in and twenty-five percent of it initially is described as it can be commercial, and then fifteen years from now, they decide, you know what, that's too much commercial, let's peel back that commercial.
It'd all be in a development agreement, so that would all have to come back through the city, and they can't just.
And that's also, that's also where you guys would get your design standards put in, which I know was really important.
Because I guess, I guess.
I feel like we're more protected by having the zone commercial.
Yeah.
Because.
Than by having it in a development agreement.
I don't have to remember to.
No, than having this zone.
Two hundred square feet, it's already hard enough to remember.
Rather than putting it spelled out as commercial in the.
I read an article last night about this, cause I was really curious about this. And it, like, we looked at the one, the charter school, for example, that came in and took out some commercial. In an area like this, with a zone like this, you could, I mean, they can go, you know, it's a, the school's permitted anywhere. But you can, at that point, you can, you know, they're not taken away unless, you can shift the commercial then around. Does that make sense? So you're not, you're not gonna get punished by having, cause I, I think we lost commercial in the city because of that school location.
Would this limit?
You have to have fifty acres of commercial.
Yep, exactly.
You can shift this way.
Yep, so if a school can come in, they can do, fine, we're gonna move it over here then, so.
But this is what makes me nervous. If the city has a plan of where they want the commercial because of other developments, does this allow them to say, well, we're building homes there because that's where our high demand is right now, we're shifting it over here?
I mean, they have to come through us.
You have to still approve.
I mean, they can't just change their plan.
It would have to come to you for approval like zoning would.
Yeah, okay.
And what I think, you know, that we've, we've learned now that we've been doing some development agreements for ten plus years, is as the market changes, they become incredibly difficult. What we planned ten years ago is no longer what we want or what the market wants. And I think what we're hoping is that this would, again, for a larger property that could take twenty years to build through, you want some flexibility kind of built into it so that you can adjust, but still maintain the product.
But this feels like you're forcing more, mentally what I'm hearing is it feels like, because you have to have a development agreement with this, it's forcing more of those development agreements, which creates odd binding things that we didn't anticipate. And so that's where I actually kind of like, I, I like, I feel like this creates more development agreements, which has its benefits, some cities totally take advantage of them, like I get some pieces of them. But I'm, I'm just struggling between that.
We contacted a, a local land use consultant who has worked both as a developer and as an administrator of the PC zone. He's also the one who's recommending that there's another tool that's been used. I mentioned it last night, used down in American Fork, that's called a community development zone. He's gonna come in and do some training with us on Monday. And I know that he would be willing to come and, and do a training session with the planning commission. We're, we're trying to see if we really do wanna stay with the PC zone type, or maybe if we feel like this other option is, is a better fit for us.
There's a lot of differences to it.
But we'll, we certainly. But we certainly, yeah, we'll make sure that we bring some of those more educational, you know, that training is part of this so that we're all come up to speed on it. So.
I think we understand your aversion to development agreements. But I think the consistency over a 20-year project, the predictability of it is what, of course, the developer...
It's fair.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
You've got to kind of try and...
And I'm actually okay with some of that. The part that I guess I've had some trouble with with some of these is the timelines. They build the high density, they do everything, and then they let the other stuff sit until they're able to figure out a way around it. Now we're putting a church in there, now we're putting a school in there, and now you only have half of what was originally going to be used as commercial or residential, bigger lots. And that's the part that we struggled, or I feel like we've struggled.
They'll fix that, right?
I think so. I think so.
Have we done that in some recent ones, where we've said you have to have 50% of your commercial done before we can give you more building permits? Maybe there's ways to specify that.
And I agree that we've learned, unfortunately, with how fast we're growing, of how to help handle some of that. But I'm still trying to grasp onto what this is going to...
So are we. So no worries.
And that's why my aversion to development agreements is only because it takes away the due process from the citizens that they thought they had.
Because it's already...
Because it's already approved. And so that, to me, I know I've worked with several other cities where 90% of their city is development agreement.
Which is how a lot of our...
And their planning commission doesn't even meet. They don't talk. I mean, it's pretty much, they just, yep. I mean, it's, they don't even have an open forum because they can't let their residents talk. And to me, that disables the ongoing evolution of a city, just like how Michael didn't, you know, when we were talking about trying to tie, no, a single future subdivision subdivision, right?
Right.
There was concern about that, and that's what I think development agreements do a little bit. And so that's where I'd like to really talk to them.
So on the development agreement, kind of as a side note of that, one of the things that we've talked about, and I think we mentioned this, is in the draft we're working on actually right now, because one of my biggest pet peeves in development agreements is the vesting, like we talked about under the old ordinance, and most of that is the process. They get vested under an old process so they don't have to have a public hearing or a neighborhood meeting or whatever.
Yeah.
So one of the things that we put in there, we'll see if this stays, is that you just have to do whatever the current process is. It's easier for staff 100%, right?
Way easier.
Because then it's not two different...
You don't have to remember each standard.
Things to remember, and they get to submit something different, and they... So that's a big thing that we're talking about. And again, we'll see if it... And now you guys are reviewing them all, so you're going to have to put your two cents in.
Needless to say, we've recommended it for continuation.
Have a public hearing and just continue it. It's going to come back.
All right. We will open the public hearing for Gordon.
Gordon, yes.
If you don't have anything to say, we will then close the public hearing. And then we'll turn to the planning commission, I'm guessing at this point, to continue for a motion.
Motion to continue item 3.3, request for text change at the create a planned community zone.
I'll second that.
Motion by Lauren, second by Adam, and we'll call for a vote. Lauren?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Brody?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
And Andy?
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much. The last item is 3.4, which is a request for a text change regarding buffering in the technology manufacturing.
Ready?
Yep.
Yeah. We adopted this TM, technology manufacturing zone, I don't know, a year ago or so. And there were some questions, as we've been now using the zone, about some buffering next to, you know, between the residential and non-residential. So we are adding this. Most of this language came from the landscaping chapter, so it was already in the ordinance. It just wasn't in the manufacturing chapter, so it wasn't clear to people that there would be buffers and that it would be provided that way. So most of this, we've just moved from the landscape chapter into this zone to make it very clear that these buffers would be required. I don't think it's anything, I'm just reading through it. Again, trees, walls, 30 feet of buffer. It's pretty standard stuff.
Thank you, Bryn. We will open this up for a public hearing.
Gordon?
We will close the public hearing at this time and turn to the planning commission for a motion or further discussion.
Do we have a definition for landscaping? It's not just grass, right? It could be other things?
Other area, yeah. In the landscape ordinance, it talks about those standards. It can be, like, at-grade concrete work can count toward that. It can be, some situations like bark.
Has to be 75%, I think.
Live plant material.
Okay, so not just grass.
And there's standards for, like, one tree every 500 square feet.
Okay.
But it's a broad definition.
Okay.
Of landscape.
Does staff, like, encourage them to do, like, xeriscaping and things like that?
Um, well, it sounds like we will be more.
Okay.
Mollusk scape.
Perfect, yeah.
Jordan Valley.
Yeah, local scaping is the new term, correct?
As it stands now, our ordinance does kind of encourage the sod, and, you know, the trees in the park strip every 30 feet, that's generally what staff looks for in reviewing those building permits. But with this new moving forward and areas potentially annexed in the future, we'll be changing that process to be more compliant with the local scapes.
Looks like we do have a comment.
But I think actually Jordan Valley is going to be the one who approves it.
So, yeah, so what we're bringing up is this TM zone's only going to be in new annexed areas of the city. And Jordan Valley has made change in their process that they're required not only to review all of our landscape, but approve it. So when we brought in Bullfrog for manufacturing, you approved the landscaping, but it's been overturned by Jordan Valley. They have said this is too not water-wise, and so we're making modifications. So to your comment, anything in this zone is going to be water-wise just because they won't give us water unless we meet those criteria. So we will have those elements in there.
That's great. Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Sounds like we might need some adjustments in the future on landscaping requirements.
So Gordon's staff, then, will just be looking for Jordan Valley's approval on those? Just confirming that they gave that approval, right?
They...
Instead of us actually reviewing the landscape plan?
They have reviewed it, told us the comments, we got to make those changes and get their approval.
Okay, great.
So they approved it, took out sod and stuff, so.
Thank you.
All right. Then turn to the planning commission for recommendation to the city council and a motion.
I recommend approval of item 3.4, request for text change regarding buffering in the TM zone.
Thank you, Lauren.
I'm tired. I'm loopy.
Adam, second. Call for a vote. Lauren?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Brody?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
And Andy?
Yes.
And Chris?
Yes.
A good reminder.
There we go. So I don't need a vote on this one?
Say, never mind.
That, I told you, it's going to take some learning for me to get this one. So we had all six votes yes on that. That's good. Are there any other remarks from?
I seriously have a very small one just because I felt weird about it. The way we do PUDs, then we do the subdivision, feels wrong for public interest. So tonight, the Danzy individual...
No, I agree the plan should have been on first.
We got to figure out a way that that happens so that we're not already moving forward with a decision that pretty much binds us to the subdivision.
Before the public comment.
Before the public comment. If there's going to be public comment, we should allow it first before we make any decision related to that project.
Good point.
Thank you, Adam. Very good point. We do have future meeting for the city council on August 14th, 2019, at 7:00 PM. And then planning commission's next meeting will be in September, even though it's stated on here August 15th, correct?
It's canceled.
Oh, it's canceled. Oh, yeah, I missed that last one. It's canceled.
August 15th is canceled.
It will be canceled August 15th.
September 5th will be your next meeting.
September 5th will be the next one. And then August 28th will also be a city council meeting at 7:00 PM. I will look for a motion adjourned.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Just curious, how many of you are going to be going up to Laguna Days for Harriman? About half of you?
All right. Hope to see you up there.